Good evening, folks. My name is Dan Bruce, the Walpole Town Moderator. Welcome to the Walpole 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting. I'm going to bring up first that Walpole Media is pleased to be providing live coverage of tonight's town meeting on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 30. Live streaming of this meeting is also available on YouTube by going to the Walpole Media channel. And you can watch the replay of this meeting anytime by going to the website walpolemedia.tv and clicking the "on demand" button. We're also making available closed captioning of the meeting, so be sure to enable it on your TV at home if needed. Okay? So, there being a quorum, over seventy-six members being present, please come to order. Does the clerk attest to the return of the warrant? Yes, she does. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quickly, we've got a couple of new department heads that I want to introduce this evening. Melissa Bingham for the Veteran's Service Officer. Thank you, Melissa. And Jim Thomas, the Park Superintendent. Thank you, Jim. Next, on my left, we have Town Council Attorney Mark Rich, Town Administrator Jim Johnson, Select Board Chair Jim O'Neill. Down in front, we have Vice Chairman Doug Shea of the Finance Committee. Mr. Crowley unfortunately will not be able to make it this evening. And we also have in the booth Jim Conley and the Assistant Town Administrator Patrick Unfortunately, folks, Congressman Lynch is not going to be here with us tonight. Town meeting doesn't happen without the efforts of many, many people, short and sweet. Thanks to each and every one of you. You know who you are, so I'm going to go on to the procedural rules now. As a reminder, all motions were due to me yesterday, twenty-four hours in advance. When you are recognized to speak, please identify yourself by name and precinct, even if I call you by name. Please do not adjust the microphone. I know it's difficult for some of you extroverts out there, but remember, this is the 21st century, so if you turn your face, your fellow members, or our smart TV or YouTube audiences will be seeing your backside. Okay? So, face front and talk to and address remarks to the re-moderator. If you are asking the question, the moderator will ask the appropriate official for a response. As has become practice, all members who wish to speak on an article will be limited to three minutes. I ask that there be no repeat speakers unless you have new information to offer. Voice voting will be the primary method of voting, and you all should have the red and green voting cards as well. Yes, perfect, thank you. And so we'll use those again alongside the voice voting. Per usual, if unable to call a voice vote, we will go to a standing vote, and we have six tellers that have volunteered. On my right, we have William Buckley and Robert Buckley. We also have in the center Katie Turco-Abeydy and Shannon McCarthy. And on my left, we have Bill O'Connell and Elizabeth Woller. Thank you, in advance. If there is a standing vote, I will first count the teller's votes by show of hands, and then the tellers will count the standing vote. The ayes first, and then the noes. The tellers shall coordinate their counts and then announce the vote from the microphone, and the town clerk and I will independently tally all the votes to determine whether the quantum of vote has been met. It is an honor for me to serve as the Town Moderator. I assure you, this and all town meetings will be run as efficiently and fairly as possible. As you know, I have no vote and thus no influence in the outcome of any particular article. Question or comments? We will now move on to the resolutions. Please rise and remain standing. I will read each resolution, and then pause for a moment of silence, and then read the next, and so on. That we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Charles J. Sinto Sr., who passed away on October 18, 2022. As a representative town meeting member from Precinct 1 from 1993 to 1998, and further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Charles' memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to the Charles family, to the Sinto family, excuse me. Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Michael D. Mcfee Jr., who passed away on October 20, 2022, as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 3 from 1974 to 1979. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Michael's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Michael's Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, our sincere appreciation, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Clifton K. Snuffer Jr., who passed away on January 23, 2023, as a member of the Select Board from 2008 to 2011, and 2013 to 2016, as a member of the Finance Committee from 1982 to 1985, as a member of the Capital Budget Committee from 1983 to 1986, as a member of the Cable Television Advisory Committee from 1982 to 1985, as a member of the Isaacs Land Study Committee from 1995 to 1997, and as a member of the Growth Control Committee in 1996, and as advisor to the Soccer Committee in 1993, and as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 5 from 1982 to 1993, '96, and 1998 to 2001, in Precinct 4 from 2002 to 2011, in Precinct 6 in 2012, and in Precinct 2 from 2013 to 2018, and then from 2021 until 2022. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Cliff's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Cliff's family. Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Joseph Bitrow, who passed away on January 27, 2023, as the Town of Walpole Police Chief from 1992 to 2002, as a member of the Walpole Housing Authority from 1986 to 1996, and 2006 to 2013, and as a state-appointed member to the Walpole Housing Authority from 2013 to 2016, and as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 1 from 1971 to 1974. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator to observe a moment of silence in Joseph's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Joseph's That we, the representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Kenneth Sendal, who passed away on March 11, 2023, as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 7 from 1974 to 1976, and in an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Kenneth's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Kenneth's Resolve that we, representative town meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Spring Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Russell W. Olson, who passed away on March 16, 2023, as a representative town meeting member in Precinct 1 from 1987 to 1992. And further, an acknowledgment of the town's loss, we request the moderator observe a moment of silence in Russell's memory. And further, that the town clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Russell's family. At this point in time, I have a preliminary motion and a second from the Finance Committee to waive the reading of the warrant. Questions or comments? There being none, the Finance Committee's motion requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. It is a unanimous vote. I have another properly seconded motion, that all motions of the Finance Committee be the main motion. Questions or comments? There being none, this also requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a unanimous vote. Before we proceed to Article 1, I have a little something different tonight. Mr. Juisty, would you kindly stand up, please, sir? If you could remain standing for a couple moments, Mr. Juisty, I have a proclamation here that the, from the Town, the Mass Senate, and the House of Representatives. Whereas Richard Juisty has served this community as one of the first representative town meeting members for fifty-three years, and whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, and whereas through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of representative town meeting, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to the municipal government in our town, and whereas Richard has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and of his fellow public servants, now therefore the Town of Walpole expresses our sincere appreciation and thanks, as well as that of our citizens to Richard for his distinguished service to the community. So, folks, I also have here, as you can see, the, from the House, the citation from the House of Representatives, and also from the Massachusetts State Senate. The, I'd like you to know, with that fifty-three years, he is our, as best I know, the only original member from 1971 to 2023. We will now proceed to Article 1, a general article that remains open throughout town meeting, and in Article 1 it is moved that the Town will hear and act on the report of any committee, or to choose any committee the Town think proper and transact, any other business that may legally come before it. So, we first have the School Committee Chair, Kristin Syrek, is going to come down and talk to us on the Walpole High School.
Do you know Kristin Syrek, Chair of the School Committee? I'm also an RTM in Precinct 6. I wanted to provide you with an update on the high school renovation plans. I'm going to keep this short and not take any questions. My colleagues and I will be available during the break to take any questions. For nearly a decade, we've been exploring ways to address the building needs at the high school and both middle schools. As you all know, we're in the process of building a combined middle school. The progress is starting to be very visible. Steel's gone up in the last month, so that's great news for us. The not-so-visible part of the progress is also really good news. Walpole is only one out of thirteen MSBA projects that is on budget, and we're still on target to open in the fall of 2024. With support from the Town Administrator's Office and in partnership with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, we now can turn our attention toward addressing the needs of the high school. We recognize that without the MSBA support, any work at the high school must be done within the town's available revenue and without a negative impact on the operating budget. Prior town meeting appropriations have already funded a feasibility study and schematic design work for the high school, so we've spent months moving those processes forward. Working with Tape and Compass, who are our partners on the middle school, we've reviewed several options and narrowed down proposed renovations that include the following. The existing science wing to support current environmental science and biotechnology curriculum, and to provide the flexibility to adapt to future programmatic changes. Renovations will increase classroom size, add breakout rooms, a greenhouse, and allow for more authentic, real-world problem-solving. Science is probably the curriculum area that undergoes the most rapid change, and we need our facilities to support students' present-day and future STEM learning. Also, a new fieldhouse structure to support curriculum departments and sports programs, including regulation volleyball and basketball sites and an indoor track. Last week at the School Committee meeting, we heard about the flexible wellness programs being offered at the high school that gives them more choice, and also the limitations in the existing space. All this could be addressed by the fieldhouse. It would also make the high school eligible to host MIAA tournaments, both our own games and potential revenue-generating events. In addition, it would offer more spaces for community programs, like the Unified Basketball Program we also heard about last week. It's important to note that a simple construction of a largely open box makes the fieldhouse the most cost-effective than building a new wing of additional classrooms and other options that we reviewed. It also opens up additional space within the building that we can use to improve the facilities for other departments. For example, once the gym is moved, we can leverage space for music classrooms, practice rooms, and performances. It would also create a multipurpose space that we could use for large group demonstrations and assemblies for various programs. The connection to the science classroom can also provide a drop zone for real-world physics lessons. Moving the music department provides new areas for student support services that would address the needs of all students, including counseling services for the growing mental health needs, and additional more accessible space for the L and Metco programs. As you can see, the comprehensive project will address various needs serving more than the eleven hundred students at Walpole for years to come. The next phase in the project will be to finalize the schematic designs and move to the design phase. This will require funding requests to the town meeting in the fall. Construction costs will follow the design work and will be addressed about a year from now. So that's our quick update. Again, we're available at the break and also through the School Committee email address should you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Syrek. And now we've got a presentation on the Tri-County Proposed Building Plans from the Tri-County Superintendent Dr. McGuire.
Hello, everyone. I'm Karen McGuire, the Superintendent at Tri-County VOTEC in Franklin. And with me tonight is Trip Elmore. He's our OPM for the building project. Twenty-four hours ago, I thought we were going to be talking about Stanley Cup Championship, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen, so instead we'll talk about our building project. Tri-County is your regional vocational technical high school, located, as I said, in Franklin. Walpole is one of the original members of the Tri-County Regional School District, which was established in 1973. Our building is fifty years old, and it's in major need of repair and renovation. The Tri-County, the Tri-County VOTEC building was initially funded by the state fifty years ago, but the regional agreement that the school has now dictates that all of the eleven communities would take care of the new building process.
So, we entered into the new building process in about 2020, when the MSBA, and you're all very familiar with the MSBA from the sounds of things, invited Tri-County in. So, in 2020, they were invited into eligibility. At that point in time, we formed the project team, got the architect on board, and we began to look at the existing conditions of the existing school. The existing school envelope is falling apart. The structure itself is out of date, so anything we do to touch that building would need to be updated. It doesn't meet current access or building code, and what you don't see when you walk in there, because they keep it very nice and clean, is that behind the walls, the infrastructure is just failing and crumbling. So, the pipes are breaking, they're cracking, the fire protection system is non-existent, the electrical gear is starting to fry. They've literally had fires in some of their electrical gear. So, there's a real need to take action. We went through a very transparent process of trying to find options. It initially started out as a renovation-based project. When we went through the process of going through all the detail, we found that a new building was pretty much the same cost as a renovation, without disturbing the students' day-to-day educational process. It was then put in front of the public, as well as members of the school, and the school building committee, and school committee, and it was overwhelmingly selected to be a new building. Excuse me. In the next two months, we are finishing up the schematic design phase, and in the schematic design phase right now, we are defining the basis of design. As that basis of design is finalized in the next two weeks, it'll then be estimated. At that point in time, we will then look to the bond advisor to advise us on what the local share costs will be, so that we can present that publicly to the member communities. And then with the support of the School Committee, we will be submitting that to the MSBA at the end of June.
So, the Regional School District building project is a little bit different than it is for a member district, individual school district, where it's just one town that decides. So, what happens in the situation with Tri-County, where we have eleven towns, from Sherburne all the way down to Secoq. In October, once we have the final authorization from the MSBA, at the end of October, on October 24th, we will have what's called a district-wide election. And what that means is that in each of the eleven towns, at the same time, on the same day, there'll be a one-ballot question about whether the town supports the Tri-County building project. Between now and then, as Trip said, we're finalizing all of the plans through the MSBA, and between now and then, we'll have the actual final scope and budget. We estimate the building project right now to be in the $280 million range. It's a big school. It's sixteen career vocational programs, which, again, are this area's career and tech-focused programs for the kids. We have a thousand students, about ninety or so from Walpole, and the way that the budget works is it's divided up among towns based on the number of students that you have at the school. So, again, for Walpole, it would be close to ten percent of the budget for the project, minus the grant. So, again, the MSBA does have a program that reimburses, and we're working with the MSBA to finalize how much we would be able to get reimbursed for this project, and we'll have more information as time goes on. We have a website dedicated to this project specifically called the tricountybuilding.org, or if you go on the Tri-County, regular Tri-County High School website, there's a link to the building project on that as well. Over the next few weeks, we'll be sending out a video to each of the towns that really gets into the explanation of the building and shows the pictures of what's needed, and that gets into all of the weeds with the project. And that's an information video that we'll be sending out to each of the towns over the next few weeks. And then again, in October, at the end of October, provided the MSBA gives us the authorization at the end of August, would be coming out for a community-wide vote on October 24th, where all residents would have the ability to come to vote on the project.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. As we have no further reports at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our rules provide for the moderator to make use of a consent agenda comprised of articles which generate no apparent controversy and could be properly voted on as one unit without debate. The consent agenda with article numbers and the Finance Committee vote listed was emailed to you the other day. I will read the article numbers and a brief description now. If any member objects to the inclusion of any article in the consent agenda, that article will be removed and acted upon separately in the normal course of the warrant. As I noted in the agenda, I separated it into a Part A comprised of articles requiring a simple majority vote, and a Part B, items requiring a two-thirds vote. So, we will take two votes on the consent agenda tonight. So, in Part A, for a simple majority vote, we have Article 5, water, fiscal year 23, in-year budget adjustment, Finance Committee vote, no action, 13-0-0. Article 7, sewer, fiscal year 23, in-budget adjustment, Finance Committee vote, no action, 11-0-0. Article 9, snow and ice deficit, Finance Committee vote, no action, 11-0-0. Article 10, unpaid bills, Finance Committee vote, no action, 13-0-0. Article 17, the Walpole Media budget, Finance Committee vote, favorable action, 10-0-1. And Article 19, the Scrivener's Errors, Finance Committee vote, favorable action, 13-0-0. On Article 19. Thank you, Ms. Kati. So, Part A will be Articles 5, 7, 9, 10, and 17. 19 will be taken up in the normal course of business. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. It is a unanimous vote. Part B, these will require a two-thirds vote. Article 23, zoning, remove the zoning, remove the subdivision phasing bylaw from the zoning bylaws, Finance Committee vote, favorable action, 13-0-0. Article 24, zoning subdivision appeal timeframe from 30 to 20 days, Finance Committee vote, favorable action, 13-0-0. Article 26, relief for garaging capacity of residential vehicles, Finance Committee vote, favorable action, 13-0-0. Mr. O'Leary, hold. And Article 32, citizens petition on Eastland Circle, Finance Committee vote, favorable action, 13-0-0.
Hold on 32.
Hold on 32, and who that was? Mr. Lee, thank you, Mr. Lee. So, the two-thirds vote will just be Articles 23 and 24. It will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a unanimous two-thirds vote. You're with me one sec while I pull these items. You're with me one sec while I pull these items. We will now move on into Article Twenty-two. Oh, excuse me, Article Two, yes. Oh, sorry. Yes, Joanne.
Is there any way we could take Article Thirty-two out of order and let the citizen be able to lead?
We have a motion to take Article Thirty-two out of order as the petitioners are here. Can I have a second? Chandler Sullivan, thank you, Chandler. All those in favor have taken Article Thirty-two out of order. As the petitioners are here, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
Now, all those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. It is unanimous vote. We will take up Article Thirty-two right now. Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. Article Thirty-two is a, this is a motion pursuant to Article Thirty-two which states as follow. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for the purposes of completing the construction, paving and drainage for Eastland Circle, including all incidental and related expenses, and further to authorize the treasurer with approval of the select board to borrow said sum and issue bonds and notes therefore, and further, that although these will be general obligation bonds of the town, the select board acting pursuant to the authority granted under General Laws, Chapter Eighty, and the Repair Of Private Ways, General Bylaw Four Three Three, shall assess betterments on all property benefited for the property of recovering the cost thereof. This is, again, a citizen's petition. Mr. Shea, the Finance Committee Vote?
Finance Committee Voted Favorable Action, thirteen zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, Select Board?
The Select Board Voted Favorable Action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there any questions or comments with regards to Article Thirty-two? John Lee, Precinct Six, why is the developer not paying for the cost of this? Mr. Johnson?
I don't actually know the history quite dating that far back with the road. It's been something, I believe, town meeting appropriated in the early two thousands, a similar type of betterment for the sewer and water down there, and Kathy's shaking her hands, and yes. It's just one of those roads, I hate to say it, John, I think it might have slipped through the cracks whenever it was created in the seventies or eighties. And the residents, I believe it's four residents who live on that street, are just trying to bring it forward to get it paved and get, obviously, a much better rate with the town's paving contract on that one.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article Six, Article Thirty-two? There being none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare unanimous vote. Two-thirds, I declare a two-thirds vote. Okay. We will now move on to Article Thirty, Article Two? Having trouble with the numbers here, I still get the Bruins on my mind, sorry, I'm a little foggy here. Fifty-nine seconds. Fortunately, we don't have that many articles. So, Article Two, Personal Bylaw Amendments And Salary Schedule. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to approve the new salary schedule as recommended by the select board and found on file in the office of the town clerk. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee Vote?
Finance Committee Voted Favorable Action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, the Select Board Vote?
Select Board Voted Favorable Action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any questions or comments regards to Article Two? There being none, this motion requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. It is a majority vote. Article Three, this is for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget adjustment. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town transfer the sum of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the ambulance reserve receipt account, and six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars from free cash to the following accounts. The Walpole Fire Department, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and metering, six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee Vote?
Finance Committee Voted Favorable Action, thirteen zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, the Select Board?
Select Board Voted Favorable Action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Mr. Forsberg, Capital Budget?
Capital Budget Voted Favorable Action, six zero zero, in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the ambulance fund for the ambulance.
Thank you, Mr. Forsberg. Any questions or comments with regards to Article Three? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a favorable vote. Majority favorable vote. We will now move on to the budget, the fiscal twenty-twenty-four budget. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town accept the proposed budget that the Finance Committee recommended, and that town meeting vote that the town fix the salary and compensation for elected officials of the town as provided for by General Laws, Chapter Forty-one, Section One-O-eight, for their services for the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand and twenty-three, and that the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of municipal and school departments and incidental expenses of the town for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, July first, two thousand and twenty-three, to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. At the sum of one-hundred-and-eleven, one-hundred-and-fourteen million dollars, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, four-hundred-and-one be raised from the following funding sources. Raise and appropriate from taxation, one-hundred-and-eleven million, ninety-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. Ambulance Fund, one million, eighty-thousand dollars. Sale of cemetery lots, sixteen thousand dollars. Water Enterprise Fund, one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Sewer Enterprise Fund, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. And the Overlay Fund, four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. Again, for a total of one-hundred-and-fourteen million, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, four-hundred-and-one dollars. I will now just roll through, and you know what? Before I roll through the individual department budgets, we'll go through, this is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, the Finance Committee Vote?
Finance Committee Voted Favorable Action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, Select Board?
Select Board Voted Favorable Action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. So, I'm just gonna go through, yes, Mr. O'Leary? Yes, because all the material was sent to you beforehand, and you have your warrant, and you were sent motions, and you were sent the consent agenda, and all the information's available on the town's website. So, I'm gonna go through and call the, just the departments. If you want it, the individuals, like, for instance, general government includes about twenty-odd departments. So, total general government is six million, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Any holds on any department within general government? I'll give you a moment. Public Safety? Thirteen million, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. I heard a hold for what department? Public Safety. That the entire, you're gonna go on Police, Fire, Inspection, Waits, Measures, Emergency Management, and Animal Control? Police, please, okay, and I'm sorry, you are? Susan Naughton, thank you, Susan. On the Police Department, Mr. O'Leary? Waits and Measures. Folks, just to remind you, if you plan on talking to any specific department, you yourself have to ask, so no one can piggyback on Ms. Naughton. So, if you wanna hold on Police, you need to speak up for yourself, just to be clear, all right? Okay, Public Education, fifty-five million, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, and ten dollars. Public Works, five million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Mr. O'Leary? Any others? Health and Human Services, eight-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Culture and Recreation, two million, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Debt and Interest, seven million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, and fifty-seven dollars. Assessments And Fringe Benefits, twenty-three million, one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Again, total overall budget, one-hundred-and-fourteen million, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, four-hundred-and-one dollars. So, we'll go back now, and... No. So, we're gonna go through the holds first, and then we'll vote on the budget. So, Ms. Naughton, could you please come forward on the Police Department?
Susan Naughton, Precinct Four, through you, Mr. Moderator. I just have a question about the body-worn cameras on the Police Department budget, and if those, if our police currently wear them, if everybody wears them? If I could just get a little bit of background on them?
Chief, Chief Keller? Yeah, please.
Chief Rich Keller, Walpole Police, we do not currently wear them right now. What you see on there is a five-year outlook on capital budget that we left in there as a placeholder in case, in the event that it does come up going forward, but that's why that's on there, it's on our current budget right now.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Naughton? You certainly can.
And so, does that, does that cover, I guess, every officer wearing them all the time? Or just sort of, what's the plan for that? If it's a placeholder, then what's the plan for it?
Chief Keller?
There's a lot to work through on that topic right now. We had it in there for, again, years down the road. The plan would be for everybody to wear them if that were to come up at some point in the future. So, that would be our goal. Again, it's more of a placeholder for the future, it's nothing in the works at this time, but that's where it's in there.
Thank you, Chief Keller. Ms. Naughton, do you release your hold?
I release my hold.
Thank you, Ms. Naughton. Mr. O'Leary, Waits and Measures?
John O'Leary, Precinct Three, through you, Mr. Moderator. Could someone explain why it went from zero to twelve thousand on the personnel?
Jim, are you able to help us there? Why we went from zero to twelve thousand on?
Waits and Measures.
Waits and Measures.
Waits and Measures, sure. So, this is, we were recently advised last May around this time that the state would no longer be handling that for towns over twenty-five thousand. The state was handling that service for us. So, we've stepped in, funded that position on a part-time basis. We actually have someone who lives in Framingham helping, helping the inspection department out with that, so that's where that came from.
Thank you, I release my hold.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, while you're there, Snow and Ice?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I believe we have had, well, let me ask the question. Was there excess left over from the fiscal twenty-three budget in the Snow and Ice account?
Mr. Johnson?
The current balance in the Snow and Ice account is four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So, four thirteen's left.
So, under my understanding, that will then go to free cash, is that correct, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Johnson, yes, that's correct.
So, with the current climate change in effect and the green housing, whatever, why are we budgeting next year at so, at the same amount as this year when we had so much left over from the current year?
I will let Mr. Johnson speak to that, but I believe there's some kind of requirement around there. Mr. Johnson?
There is a mass general law requirement that doesn't allow you to go backwards in that account. That's why we sometimes raise it by fifty dollars or level fund it, so...
Okay, thank you. I release my hold, then.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions, any other questions or comments with regards to Article Four? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. Thank you. I declare a majority vote. Article Six, this motion is pursuant to the two thousand and twenty-four water budget. It is regularly moved and seconded that the following sums be appropriated to the Water Enterprise Fund and expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works for the purpose of operating the Water Department in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Personnel Services, one million, one-hundred-and-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. Expenses, one million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, and ten dollars. Debt Service, one million, seven-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. And that the sum of four million, eight-hundred-and-eight thousand, forty-one dollars be raised as follows. By user fees, four million, two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. And miscellaneous receipts, N.M.W. Pat, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. This is a petition of the Sewer and Water Commission. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee Vote?
Finance Committee Voted Favorable Action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, Select Board?
Select Board Voted Favorable Action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Mr. Hassenjager, the Sewer and Water?
The Sewer and Water Commission voted five zero.
Favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Hassenjager. Any questions or comments with regards to Article Six? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a majority vote. Article Eight, Fiscal Year Twenty-twenty-three Sewer Budget. It is regularly moved and seconded that the following sums be appropriated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund and expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works for the purpose of operating the Sewer Department in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Personnel Services, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, nine-seventy-three. Expenses, four million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, five-ninety-five. Debt Service, seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred dollars. And that the sum of five million, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars be raised as follows. User Fees, four million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, seven-thirty-three. Miscellaneous Receipts, five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, thirty-five dollars. This is a petition of the Sewer and Water Commission. Mr. Shea, Finance Committee Vote?
Finance Committee Voted Favorable Action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, Select Board?
Select Board Voted Favorable Action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Mr. Hassenjager, Sewer and Water?
Through Monitor, I voted favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hassenjager. Any questions or comments with respect to Article Eight? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. All those opposed, please raise your red card and say no. It is a majority vote, thank you. Article Eleven, this is the police contract. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to approve the monetary items in an agreement between the Town of Walpole and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, I U P A, A F L C I O, Local One Fifteen, Walpole Police Union, and to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars to defray the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four cost of said agreement for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, and authorize the town accountant to allocate such amounts accordingly. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, finance committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. And Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any questions or comments with regard to Article Eleven? Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John O'Leary, precinct three. I have a question... Question clarification. On the back page, on the charts, concerning the sergeant's pay schedule, could someone explain why it looks different from one year before to after?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure, I can address that question. So currently, the salary schedule, the sergeants, there's seven steps in the salary schedule for officers. However, the sergeants start at step four, and all, go all the way through steps seven. So it's a little bit confusing, so we're trying to just make it less confusing. So, in the year we're going into, keep the status quo, second year of the contract, have, just establish steps one through four there for the sergeants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other questions or comments with regard to Article Eleven? There being none, this motion requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. It is a majority vote. Article Twelve, the firefighter contract. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to approve the monetary items in an agreement between the Town of Walpole and the Walpole Permanent Firefighters Association, Local Two Four Six Four, and to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of one hundred thousand, one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars to defray the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four cost of said agreement for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, and authorize the town accountant to allocate such amounts accordingly. Are there any questions, excuse me, this is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, finance committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any questions or comments with regards to Article Twelve? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green card. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a majority vote. Article Thirteen, the D P W contract. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town take no action. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, the finance committee vote?
Finance Committee voted no action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted no action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any questions or comments with regard to Article Thirteen? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green card. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a majority vote. Article Fourteen, the clerical contract. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to approve the monetary items in an agreement between the Town of Walpole and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, A F L C I O, State Council Ninety-Three, Local Nineteen Fifty-Seven Clerical Union, and to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars to defray the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four cost of said agreement for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, and authorize the town accountant to allocate such amounts accordingly. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, finance committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any questions or comments with regard to Article Fourteen? Mr. O'Leary?
John O'Leary, precinct three. My question on this, Mr. Moderator, is concerning the change in the classification of the payroll assistant from prior years to the new schedule. Appears to be going from a C three to a C five. Could someone explain that change?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure. The thought process here is that, that position now basically has a confidential rating, because it's gone up, it's no longer just do the basic payroll needed with it. Each and every person is required to go in there. We have eight hundred plus employees. That, that position has grown over the last twenty-plus years, and to gather a lot more responsibilities than a C three. So, it's not the top level, but it's in recognition of the additional responsibilities that position's undertaken.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article Fourteen? Yes?
Liz Barrows, precinct one. I just had a question on the holidays, adding Juneteenth to the list of holidays. Is that, are all the unions within the town, do they all have, have they all added that in their contracts?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, they have.
Thank you, Ms. Barrows. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article Fourteen? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a majority vote. Article Fifteen, the dispatcher's contract. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to approve the monetary items in an agreement between the Town of Walpole and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, I U P A, A F L C I O, Local Four Sixty-Six, Walpole Public Safety Dispatchers Union, and to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of twenty-five thousand, eighty-eight dollars to defray the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four cost of said agreement for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such amounts accordingly. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, finance committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article Fifteen? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. It is a majority vote. Article Sixteen, the library contract. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to approve the monetary items in an agreement between the Town of Walpole and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, A F L C I O, State Council Ninety-Three, Local Nineteen Fifty-Seven, Library Union, and to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars to defray the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four cost of said agreement for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such amounts accordingly. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, finance committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted favorable action, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any questions or comments with regards to Article Sixteen? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. It is a majority vote. Article Eighteen. Folks, this is going to be divided into three separate motions for ease and of recording the vote, and, but we will discuss them all as one. Alright? So it's one article, we're gonna divide it into three separate votes. There are three separate motions. Just, so when you come up, if you're gonna speak on a specific point, please make your, you know, which, which component, which property you're speaking to. I think it'll be obvious, but that's how we're going to move forward. Any objections? Okay. It is regularly moved, this is surplus properties. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote separately on three properties under Article Eighteen. A, it is regularly moved and seconded to transfer from board or officer with custody of the land described below for the purposes for which it is currently held by the select board for purposes of disposition, and authorize the select board to sell, lease, or convey all or a portion of the site known as the Old Town Hall, located at nine eighty Main Street, described in a deed recorded with the Norfolk Registry of Deeds in book twelve forty-five, page five ninety-two, and shown on the assessor's map thirty-three as Lot Thirty-four for such consideration on such terms and conditions as the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town, and authorize the select board to execute all documents and take all actions necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. Folks, B is the exact same except for, this is to sell the site known as the East Walpole Library, located at five Walcott Avenue. It is recorded in a deed at the Norfolk Registry, book two thousand and twenty-eight, page three ninety-three, shown on the assessor's map as, assessor's map twenty as Lot Two Fifty-One. And motion C is again the same. This is for a vacant lot located, located near the intersection of Kingsbury Street and Plain Street, described in a deed recorded with the Norfolk Registry of Deeds, book eighteen ninety-one, page eighty-four, and shown on the assessor's map thirty-one as Lot Ninety-seven. These will all require a two-thirds vote when we get there. Again, there'll be individual votes. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, finance committee vote?
On eighteen A, finance committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Yep, keep going, B?
On eighteen B, finance committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero. And on eighteen C, finance committee voted favorable action, eleven zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neil, select board?
Select Board voted favorable action on A, B, and C, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Any questions or comment with regard to Article Eight? Come on down.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Could I make a couple of comments?
Yes, excuse me, folks, the, have a seat for a second. Mr. Johnson's gonna make a couple of comments first.
I'll be very brief. Prior to this discussion getting underway, I want to take an opportunity to provide just a few comments under Article Eighteen. Article Eighteen's asking that this body, the legislative body, town meeting, sell three, grant permission to the select board to sell three parcels. Item A is the sale of the Old Town Hall, which over the last few days has received quite a bit of discussion on social media. If you have not already done so, please take a copy of the document in the back of the room titled, "Old Town Hall, Article Eighteen." The purpose of the handout was to clarify some of the information that was posted out there. The general thought behind this article, as you can see it here in the handout, is to get some guidance and feedback from this body. We've looked at this building multiple times over the years. We've brought it to experts to study the building. We've issued multiple RFPs that have allowed any interested party to come forward and rent the building for up to thirty years. Each time, we were told the same thing, it's just too costly to take on this building. The select board wants to know from you, what would you like to see if we can sell it? If we could sell it, or would you like to hold on to it and make the repairs as they come up? The estimated repairs is about eight million dollars. We don't have eight million dollars on hand now, or in the foreseeable future, to bring this building back to the place where it was one hundred plus years ago. Last year, the select board asked town officials, mostly department heads, to give them a list of the capital improvements, I believe it's in your booklet. That list totaled just about eighty-six million dollars over the next five years or so. If this article is passed, Old Town Hall will not be demolished. The town will follow a very long and deliberate process in order to sell the property. If this article is not passed, this body will continue to be asked to maintain inappropriate funds for utilities and to replace such items that, that come up as necessary. One item that we are aware of that's going to be up in the next few years is likely the slate roof. I am told that estimate is about eight hundred thousand dollars to replace that roof. However this body acts on this article, we will move forward with, and we're not, we don't see it being in jeopardy of being torn down. So please take a look at this handout that we put in the back of the room tonight, and thanks, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Jen Karnakis, precinct three. And in the interest of full disclosure, I'm also the current chair of the Walpole Historical Commission, and I'm making these remarks in my individual capacity as an R T M, not on behalf of the Historical Commission. I stand in opposition to Article Eighteen A, but before I begin my remarks, I have a few clarifying questions. Through you, Mr. Moderator, my first question has three parts. If Article Eighteen A passes and the select board enters into an agreement to sell the Old Town Hall, will the terms of the agreement be subject to town meeting review and approval?
Sir?
The RFP will not...
They will not, this is the authorization right here, right? This is the authorization.
Will there be any mechanism for town, the public, or R T M member input on the agreement?
On the, can I ask for clarification on that?
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
What, what agreement do you mean?
If you go into a purchase and sales agreement?
No.
Okay. Is there any dollar amount or threshold that would trigger a town meeting review?
No.
Okay. My next question is whether this article would prevent the select board from accepting a below market value offer, or otherwise require, alternatively require, the select board to accept the best offer on a property?
Mr. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. The, the town would have to undertake an appropriate procurement process dictated by Chapter Thirty-B, Section Sixteen. That doesn't require the town take an above value price. It requires the town to go through an evaluative process, so we'll look at price as well as the proposal itself. So it's a, it's a qualitative versus simply price-based process, depending on what the, what the offer is, both combined price and quality of the proposal to determine what is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Does this article require that if sold, at least a portion of the Old Town Hall will remain open and accessible to the public?
No.
Okay.
Did you have it? No.
Has the select board, the town administrators, or other town of Walpole officials been in contact with potential buyers in the last six months? Has any potential buyer or buyers walked through or toured or otherwise been shown the interior of Old Town Hall in the last six months?
Sorry.
That's, I was just gonna say, Jim, or Jim?
I can tell you, I don't know if within the last six months. We have brought multiple people through there, including select board members, other town officials, local developers who own property in the downtown. I can't recall if it was in the last six months or so, but I can tell you that no one has come forward recently and said, "I want to lease this property," or "I want to purchase this property." We don't have someone in mind. The people we've brought through, it's been open to the public, and that's why we issued those RFPs in nineteen and in twenty. We just literally got no responses whatsoever.
That's all my questions, thank you very much. And I'll try to keep my remarks sort of brief. I reached out to the Mass Historical Commission to alert them to these potential future plans that impact the town hall, because every year, they remind local historical commissions that the owners of properties protected by a preservation restriction, such as our deed restriction, have a special responsibility to safeguard the historic integrity of their buildings, sites, and their settings. And they, they should be, the historical, Mass Historical Commission should be made aware of any present or future plans for rehabilitation, construction, sale, or transfer. Staff at the M H C confirmed what Mr. Johnson said earlier, that any new owner who would propose demolition of the building would require M H C approval. Likewise, for many other proposed changes, which I'm not sure everybody knows, the M S G will likely have to review all of them. And just so it's clear, the deed restriction on the Old Town Hall, that includes interior spaces, exterior spaces, fixtures such as windows and doors, and the landscape. And you can see that in the deed restriction and the accompanying restriction guidelines. I just want to explain to my fellow R T Ms why I do not support Article Eighteen in its current form, and for a number of reasons. I believe this broad article effectively gives the current select board and future select boards of an unknown composition unfettered power to do what they want with the town hall. And I should stop here and say that, it's not that I don't trust our town officials or our select board, but I'm a lawyer by training, and I'm playing, I'm getting taught for years to think about the worst-case scenario and plan for it. So that's what, that's what this bring up my, my reasoning. This is a blanket authorization to dispose of the Old Town Hall with no long-term plan or goal in place, which in my opinion is at least partially why we're in this situation in the first place. Article Eighteen A does not contain any mechanism for town import or review of potential sale or any agreements related thereto. The current version does not require there be any public access to at least a portion... The current version does not require there be any public access to at least a portion of the Old Town Hall if the property is sold. I acknowledge there's a large financial commitment to not only bring this building up to code, but to make it usable for another suitable purpose, and that the previous reports describe the costs and other challenges with modernizing and updating the Old Town Hall. I do not believe that moving straight to giving the select board the broad power to sell, lease, or convey the Old Town Hall is the right answer for how to best to proceed. I would like the town to explore other avenues and potential ways to move forward with the Old Town Hall. After attending the Paragon Group presentation at the January nineteenth Economic Development Commission meeting, I actually came away with a somewhat sense of optimism that there might be a path forward for the town to help make the Old Town Hall property more attractive to potential buyers and less, or people who would lease it. In fact, I think the general mood in the room based on the comments made after the presentation, or at least the mood of several people, was that it was positive. There was a discussion about potentially partnering or entering a joint development agreement with a potential buyer, where the town would commit a certain amount of money, for example, through debt and equity, and would also raise as many additional funds as possible through grants and other funding sources.
Ms. Karnakis, excuse me. You've exceeded three minutes by a couple of minutes, so with the, does the members mind if she continue? All those in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
Continue, Ms. Karnakis.
My apologies, I was trying to not talk too fast.
I hear you rushing through it. Only I talk fast. You slow down, okay? They wanna hear you.
So I just wanted to say that would help close the funding gap and would make the property more attractive to potential buyers and less ease. I'm not advocating for the specific pathway per se, but merely to suggest that there are other alternatives available, and we should not rush to, in my opinion, is the most extreme version that, before the public has been advised of a variety of options. The people of Walpole need to have an opportunity to consider all options, not just this one. I do not think the community at large has been properly made aware of the potential impact of passing this article, I'll skip through. Not that these processes are equal, but I will note that for the middle school project, we had a number of community forums designed to educate the public, answer questions, and listen to feedback. So again, I encourage my fellow RTMs to vote no on Article eighteen A. And just quickly to talk about eighteen B, I just wanted to remind everyone that the East Walpole Library is also a historical site. The building was actually constructed in eighteen eighty-two to eighteen eighty-three and was dedicated in May eighteen eighty-three. It's actually registered twice in the Mass Historical Commission MACRIS database, which is the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System. One says an individual building, recorded in nineteen eighty-eight, and one says part of the East Walpole Inventory, recorded in two thousand eight. So just in case you saw in the assessor's database, it says it's listed as nineteen thirty-six. It actually became the library in nineteen thirty-four, that's not the correct date. So I just wanted to be clear that that's also a historical property. Thank you very much for extending time, I'm done.
And you know what, you're actually right on, because you talked to two motions. Yes?
Christina Shinick, Precinct Five. I rise in opposition through you, Mr. Moderator, to eighteen C, the vacant lot located at the intersection of Kingsbury Street and Plain Street. And I oppose this because I'm one of the people who lives near there, and there are an awful lot of us who live in that neighborhood who walk that street regularly. It's one of the few streets where you can walk on the street fairly safely. It has very limited traffic, there are sheep grazing in the fields, there are all kinds of birds in the trees, it's a lovely area to walk and walk safely. And I would hate to see any more development occur on that street. I think it would be a decrease in the quality of life for the residents in that area of Walpole. There aren't that many areas where you can walk safely and walk by sheep and other animals that are grazing, and I find it very, very pleasant. So I would hate to see any development happen in that area. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Shinick. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article eighteen A, B, or C? Ms. McCarthy?
Hi, Shannon McCarthy, Precinct Three. I'm reading a letter posted by Joanne Damish. She, you know, gave her blessing to share it at town meetings, so here I go. These are the words of Joanne, not me, but I will say I agree. Okay. "I was the selectman for nine years, chairman for three years. I was on many committees and part of many groups who worked to get a new library, fought a sledge dump from coming to this town, fought against proposals to locate power plants in Walpole, worked to bring the MBTA bus to Walpole Center, worked to have a new and beautiful senior center, et cetera, et cetera. So many of our townspeople worked to make this town the wonderful place it is today. Please honor our work and respect the meaning and history of the old Walpole Town Hall." So this is regarding eighteen A, I should add, if you didn't guess. "It is an important part of our history. We have spent millions on so many things in our town, and we should not forget the one building that represents our town. I have lived in Walpole for sixty-three years. I am now ninety years old and remember the people who worked fifty years ago to recognize the history and meaning of Old Town Hall. So many of those people are now gone. I hope you will recognize their hard work and vote to carry on their legacy. Thank you, Joanne Damish."
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy, and Ms. Damish. Mr. Lee?
Good evening, John Lee, Precinct Six. On Article eighteen B, the East Walpole Library, I think that it's short-sighted to sell off a piece of property like that in East Walpole. It's been used in the past as a community center, and I know there's been a lot of looking at the Town Hall saying, "What are the costs and everything?" But the cost of keeping the East Walpole Library, although I'm sure there are costs, it is seen not significant, and I think we're losing an asset that the town should not give up. Also, on the vacant land at the intersection of Kingsbury and Plain Street, I'm a direct rebutter to that, and it's been planned that that was going to be part of the cemetery expansion, this Kingsbury Cemetery expansion. In fact, if you look at the third to last page in our warrant, there's a budget item there for forty thousand dollars for the Plain Street Cemetery expansion. So I think that those two, B and C, one, the vacant land doesn't cost the town anything as far as maintenance, and it seems like they would just add it on to this Article eighteen, which was originally about the Town Hall, and even in the handout that we received, there was nothing about Kingsbury Street or the East Walpole Library on Walcott Street. So I think selling off those two properties is unnecessary, and we're losing assets for the town. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article or motions eighteen A, B, or C?
Hi, Dave Clark, Precinct Seven. As mentioned by the town administrator, that most of the people looking to, that had a consideration for leasing the building were reticent because of the amount of repair that would be required, was a big hindering factor. And I'm wondering, if the town were to consider selling the property, is it anticipated that the town would be required to invest a certain amount of money to get the property to a certain level that it would be saleable? Is that anticipated?
Mr. Johnson? Any, any investment to prepare for sale?
We could sell it as-is.
Sell as-is.
And you have an estimated amount that it would be sold for as-is?
We have an appraisal that estimates it to be worth one point two million dollars.
Okay. Thank you. And on Article, on the Article C, is there motivation for the sale of the property on Kingsbury? Is there a specific motivation since it's a non-maintenance item?
Mr. Johnson?
I can just speak to that. We, we did a town, internal down-wide review of town-owned parcels. This is one of the parcels that propped up, it's about forty thousand square feet, pretty level, it's ideal for a single-family house, the run for the sewer connection's about just under four hundred feet. It just seemed like an ideal spot, and we haven't done one of these in some time, you know, asked town meeting for authorization. We've been successful the last few years selling off some tax title properties, and we decided to, you know, let's try, you know, three parcels at a time, and if town meeting was interested in it, great. We estimated to be the, I think the appraisal came in at about three hundred thousand for that lot.
So it probably sounds ideal from the purchaser point of view. From the town's point of view, is it, is it primarily just for revenue?
Just, yeah.
Or to, or to help a potential buyer?
To get it back on the tax rolls.
To get it back on tax, okay, thank you. So I'll just conclude by saying, in, in general, I, unless there's a reason, otherwise, I generally oppose the sale of most town properties, because most properties you really can't get back, so I would oppose all three of these, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. O'Leary?
General O'Leary, Precinct Three. I'll speak to eighteen C first. I noticed you gave a figure roughly, Mr. Johnson gave a figure roughly three hundred and fifty thousand. With current market values of housing shortages, I'd like to make sure if we do sell this lot, that we make sure it's for full market value and not at what it's necessarily assessed for, because I have a feeling a builder is gonna come up and, sure, I'll build, I'll pay that much for it, but it's gonna sell him, get, yield to him several hundred thousand more. Regarding the East Walpole Library, again, the upkeep costs seem to be minimal. It doesn't seem like it's a significant issue to not main it, main, keep up its maintenance when something may come down the line where we need a presence in East Walpole. I notice not next to the fire department, but I'm sure the fire department would be looking for any additional land that could be swapped out in East Walpole to allow them improvements to their location. Eighteen A, the Town, Old Town Hall, this is the landmark building for the town. If any building represents the town, it is this building. We are looking to spend up to a million dollars to purchase and build a new high school or upgrade a high school, and we're spending that to build a new middle school. Why can't we spend a much smaller amount to upgrade this building and keep it in the history of what our town is supposed to be, the friendly town? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Carroll, Mr. Chakarowski, I think Mr. Carroll is there first.
Bill Carroll, Precinct Four. I'm against selling the Town Hall. I, I've been here a long time, and when you went to sell the old library, and we talked about it, how much money did we get for that?
I can't hear. How much money for the old library?
What was the, the appraised value is four ten?
Four hundred and ten thousand is the appraised value.
Oh, yeah, and somebody said they put a million dollars into that? I thought that was the deal with, with the old library?
Are you talking about the Town Hall, or are you talking about the Walpole Public Library?
The old public library up here on Common Street. How much money did we get?
The old public library on the Common Street?
The one on Common Street, that was sold for two hundred thirteen thousand dollars.
Well, I'm a little nervous about...
I believe back in two thousand thirteen.
Two hundred thirteen, and somebody said they put a million dollars into it, right? I don't see the million going in, but hey, that's just me. I think that we could use this property, and we shouldn't sell these properties, because, you know, let's put it in perspective, we do a pond for a million dollars across from Town Hall. That's what that pond cost, didn't it? To redo? A million dollars.
Mr. Carroll?
You're gonna sell, you're gonna sell the, sell the, sell the building, which is a landmark, but you'll do a pond for a million dollars out of your free fund or whatever it is? I don't agree with it. I don't agree with it, and I don't think it's right.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Chakarowski?
Philip Chakarowski, Precinct Seven. I just want to say three things. First, I do know that lots of town boards have looked really hard at this problem with the Town Hall, trying to, what to do with it, so I do wanna appreciate that, all the work that has happened. But I do, I do think it would be best if we could keep that, the Town Hall, in as a town property, and I, I think like Jen mentioned at the economic development meeting that I was also at, there did seem to be some possibilities of pursuing maybe a joint, a joint venture with another, you know, with a company, the town paying some, or, and, you know, trying to make it more affordable to someone to buying it, but also getting access to the building, and I think that's my third point. Whatever happens, I think it's important that we have some access to the entire side of the building. It is a very historic building, we, we shouldn't be giving it up where then we, it becomes a non-entity in our town, so, so I think that's very critical, that if, if we're not able to keep it, and I actually would prefer that, at least, at least make sure that, that there's some public access to the building, that people can go in and, you know, see some of the, the space that's been renovated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chakarowski. Ms. Kati?
Sarah Kati, Precinct Eight. I am strongly opposed to the, to the sale of Old Town Hall. I appreciate, Ms. Karnakis, all the information that she shared with us. Can't hear anything? Okay.
There you go, better.
I was gonna stand there, but, anyway, so I'm strongly opposed to the sale of Old Town Hall, and I appreciate all the information shared by the Historical Chair, Jen Karnakis. I understand it's, it's a lot of money, and maybe the town doesn't have that money, but I, I think that the select board and the town has not done enough to really explore those options and really develop a long-term plan, so if it costs X million dollars, then let's, let's have a plan, a ten, twenty-year plan to, to get that money and really explore partnership or tax credits or, or other things. I think it's, it's way too short-sighted to sell this historic structure, and I'm strongly opposed to it.
Thank you, Ms. Kati.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill O'Connell, Precinct Four. I too appreciate all the work that the, the select board has done, as well as the Historical Society, and I read through the Almeida Report, and I think it was Exhibit Five, with, with respect to the potential schemes, and through you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Town Administrator, I mean, it looks like we're, to even reuse the property under their schemes, we're looking at potentially five million, a five-million-dollar expenditure at some point for reuse. And I'm just wondering, again, through you, Mr. Moderator, to even get the property ready to, potentially a resale to a developer for any, any type of reuse, what is the expenditure? What is the town looking at to even get it ready to sell?
Mr. Johnson?
So I would just note that the Almeida Report is from two thousand nineteen, so it's older. The two most recent reports are within the last year or so, the Compass Report and the other one with the executive summary there. The, the most recent one that Ms. Karnakis referenced said it was up to eight point one million and change, so I would say anywhere between five and eight, eight million dollars to bring that building up.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Moderator, if I, if I may go through the town administrator again, I'm in favor of all three articles, eighteen A, B, and C, just because my concern is, you know, based on the comments earlier, potentially we're looking at eight hundred thousand for a new roof in a year. And again, I'd love to preserve the landmark, it really defines Walpole, but with the deed restrictions in place, is there a market out there? I mean, you've, you've already put it out for two RFPs, Mr. Town Administrator. I, I think the market's spoken, no one's come forward. So by facilitating a potential, given the, the select board the authority to, to sell the property, is that gonna open up a potential market? Are the developers that are out there that would, would preserve the facade, preserve the steeple, potentially put it to a reuse of affordable housing, and, you know, do you have to give the property away? What are we looking at?
I think the council and I spoke earlier today, the, the select board can't put stipulations in there that you have to preserve the facade. There is, Ms. Karnakis referenced, the historical, Mass Historic deed in there, that's on the Registry of Deeds, that is still in there. I actually received a call from the, the state in regards to this today, the Mass Historical, they confirmed everything in there. Basically, they need to be told every step of the way if any alterations are made to that building, so I think it may make it more attractive to someone if they're able to, I've been told this by people who've come through there, I'd really rather own the building rather than sign a thirty-year lease with the town, and I keep referencing a thirty-year lease, that's the maximum amount the law allows the select board to enter into one without town meeting authority.
Okay. And, Mr. Moderator, if, again, if I may just go through the town administrator one more time, I, I read through some of the sale/leaseback, some of the potential options, they're confusing, I would love to see, you know, there's been historical tax credits that have been out there, no one's come forward, so they seem very confusing, they almost seem like a pipe dream. And, and again, I'd love to see the building preserved, I'd love to see affordable housing, I'd love to see, you know, a friendly forty be there with, with some condominiums and with some affordable housing. I think that would be a terrific use, but some of these options, it would be great to, to keep the property, but we're looking at eight hundred thousand for the roof next year, and then, you know, thirty thousand every other, each year, and then a substantial improvement just to keep it. So for those reasons, I respectfully request that, that the, the body approve eighteen A through C. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Ms. Lawson?
Lawson, Precinct Two.
Lawson, Precinct Two. I want to speak to each of these in reverse order. I'm in favor of selling the parcel, a piece of vacant land that the town does not have a use for. Should be sold so we could use the money, and somebody will be able to put up a house, or whatever. I think that makes sense, we don't have a use for it. I'm a little sad about the Wal, East Walpole Library, it's in my, my neighborhood. But again, if the town has no use for the property, it makes little sense to just maintain a building for sentimental reasons. I like to think that somebody could buy that and make it into, you know, rehab it, and make it into a nice property. So I'm in favor of selling the properties in C and B. I'm conflicted on the Town Hall, but I've been privy to a lot of conversation about the Town Hall for more than several years, and no one seems to have a good solution. But in the meantime, as has been discussed, it's costing us a lot of money to, to, to just keep it from falling apart. So I would trust that the Board of Selectmen will make the right decision on how to move forward with that. And although people are opposed to selling it, there seems to be a lack of other solutions. And again, if the town can't use property with safeguards for preserving the historical character of the building, but if we have no use for it, it doesn't make any sense to me to just continue to maintain a vacant building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Mr. Hamilton?
Hamilton, Precinct Five. I've toured museums all over the world, and this building, this Old Town Hall, would be a perfect museum. And you wouldn't have to do a lot of expense, because when you tour an old building, they let you look in the rooms. So the travel is only in the hallways, so you could keep the expense down. I oppose selling it until someone is willing to turn it into a museum, which it has valuable assets. It has a cell that was used after the assassination of Lincoln. So there are many historical ramifications of that building. I don't think we should sell the library down in East Walpole. I think that should be a community center again. And the property that's up on Kingsbury, I would want to extend the cemetery for that. So I oppose all three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Shawna Hearn, Precinct Six. One question in the quick statement. The question is on property C. There's a memorial garden, I'm not exactly sure what to put it on the corner of, plain in Kingsbury there. And I'm curious if that is included in this parcel, or if it is separate?
Mr. Johnson?
Not the cemetery, but there's like a...
Yeah, no, it isn't.
It's not included.
Thank you. And just a quick statement. To me, the heart of this is whether or not we're, you know, entrusting the future decisions, that this is not a vote on whether or not any of these items are going to be sold in any capacity. But I appreciate that there's multiple checks and balances from here, that, you know, even if we grant authority here, we also elect officials in our town that are going to make these future decisions, and we have voices at their meetings. So to me, this isn't the end of it. This is also a great start to future discussions, now that we have a lot of vibrant discussion going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Hi, Andrew Flowers, Precinct Four. I just stand in support of all three articles. I just want to make two points here. One is about the commercial real estate market. Because of rising interest rates, and because of frankly shifts in how people work, predominantly away from office buildings and at home, the credit market for financiers to develop commercial real estate is extraordinarily challenging at this moment. So one of the reasons I support giving the Select Board this leverage is, it's actually ironic that some of my good friends were, were speaking earlier against this article, and one of their points is, you know, I, I want us to push harder, to kind of look for a better solution. And now, I've been on the Finance Committee until a year ago, for four, I was there on the committee for four years, and I saw, you know, attempt after attempt fail, no buyers, again, as Mr. O'Connell recommended, there were two RFPs. But when we want to push our town leadership to find a solution, I think giving the power, not to Town Meeting, but to, to the Select Board, actually increases their leverage. Because part of the carrying cost of a potential developer is that they see that whatever they negotiate with the Select Board can get voted down at a Town Meeting. So we're actually increasing the hand of the town by passing the authority through Town Meeting tonight, giving and investing the authority in the Select Board, allowing them to have a stronger negotiating position. And I think that this is especially important, because while we've had two RFPs with no buyers, the market in terms of credit for commercial real estate development is only going to get more challenging. Again, because of interest rates, and because of banks just starting lending to commercial real estate. So I, I, I think it's a lovely building, would love for it to be historically preserved, but folks, it's been five years. We spend tens of thousands of dollars a year for utility bills to power this building. You know, you gotta just face reality, I think we should vote to approve all three articles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Ms. Higgin?
Megan Higgin, Precinct One. And I have a quick question, please forgive me if I missed it in the copious information that was provided, but is there an intended use for the revenue that would be generated by these sales? Or could you speak to, like, what budget that money would go into?
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Rich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. When, when, when the town sells property, there's a specific statutory requirement that the proceeds from sale of property goes into a, a special fund, and it's held in that fund, and it can be expended for any purpose for which the town is able to borrow for a period of years. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't actually go into the general fund, it's held in this specific fund, but it'll be subject appropriation out by Town Meeting, but specifically for purposes for which the town could borrow.
And I would just piggyback on that by saying, that's exactly what we did with the library. I believe we took the two thirteen and included it as part of the funding source for the police station, because that was the first municipal building done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgin. Mr. Kelly?
Joe Kelly, Precinct Three. By giving the Selectmen, you just said that you're limited to leasing it out for thirty years? So aren't we putting restrictions on it? If it was left to the general body, because if it's going to take eight million dollars, somebody that's going to rent that building, like in other towns, they're going to want like a, a much longer-term lease to make it profitable for them. So if you leave it up to, like, the town to lease it out, you could lease that building out to somebody for fifty, a hundred years, and it makes it more feasible for them to get their, recoup their money. Thirty years is too short of a term on, on a building that needs that kind of capital improvements, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Good evening. David Johnson, Precinct Six. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Do we have any monies that are earmarked for A and B yet that haven't been spent? That Town Meeting might have approved in the past that we're still sitting on for either A and B?
Mr. Johnson?
No, not that I can recall, I'm trying to think back. The Select Board did approve up to three hundred thousand dollars through ARPA funds, but that's not through Town Meeting for the Old Town Hall. I can't, I don't think there's any funds left in the, the Recreation Building over in East Walpole. I did note that the estimated value to bring that property up is six hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements there, but we don't, we're not sitting on any money, or there's no access from...
Three hundred from the ARPA funds?
ARPA.
Yes. That never got...
That's in the process. That was actually, ninety-six thousand is going towards the painting of the steeple that we've actually just kind of placed on pause until this discussion works itself out. Because quite frankly, we don't want to paint the steeple if you guys, if this body's giving us authorization.
So the town is holding money? That would be earmarked for...
I, I think he answered your question, Mr. Johnson, yes.
I'm not sure he did.
There's work, there's, I, I'm telling you, he did. There's work being held right now that is stopped, paused, pending the vote of this.
Right, that's been earmarked, though, the money's been approved for, for the Town Hall.
The money has been approved, they're working on painting the steeple. He indicated that, and that money is now, it's on pause, that, that work is on pause.
Okay, that answers my...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions or comments, Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to start by thanking Town Meeting for all this great input tonight and feedback, which is really a lot about what we were thinking when we brought this article forward. To be honest with you, we've been working on this problem for many years. Some would argue ten, fifteen years, probably more reasonable to say five years. But we've been working on it for quite a long time. And quite frankly, we have gotten to a point where there is no reasonable solution. And so what we thought was, bring the question to Town Meeting to see if we could extend the ability to come up with solutions, which would include selling the building. And so your feedback has been enormously helpful to me tonight, and I do appreciate it. A couple of thoughts. Number one, the, the, if, if you look at the historical restriction that was in your package, you will see that that was approved back in nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-eight. And that restriction, as we know, would carry forth to any buyer. And so part of our thinking is that if we sold it to someone, we would be selling it with the intent to maintain the, you know, historical integrity of the building. And as you've heard earlier, that means you actually have to go and get approvals through certain state agencies that oversee these things, and we would have to do that. Now, that by itself is probably going to reduce what some potential buyer might be willing to pay for it, because they're going to be restricted, and I think all of us would understand that. But from our point of view, we want the, you know, the restriction, we put it in place for a reason. And we really want to maintain the integrity of the Town Hall as it is today, to the extent that is possible, and to the extent that would be required under these restrictions. So that's number one. Number two is, we have looked at, well, we've had three studies done. Some of the feedback I've gotten recently is, well, gee, we should study this. We have studied it, we've studied it three times, and we've come to the same conclusion each time we've studied it, which is, this is an enormously expensive proposition. In order to bring the Town Hall back to a state where we could use it for town purposes, or to lease it, would be millions of dollars at a minimum. Is it five million? Is it eight million? A lot depends on what you actually do, and what you might be preparing it for. But it is millions. And millions at a time where we have a lot of requests for capital. So we heard earlier tonight about the request to improve the high school. The school board brought that forward tonight and gave an update. And we're working very hard to come up with a creative solution to do that. But that's going to be in the neighborhood of thirty million dollars. To me, that would be a bigger priority than fixing the Town Hall. Others may disagree, but that was my point of view. In addition, if you look at the long list of capital items that we have, I think the number is eighty-six million?
Yes.
And it includes a couple of really important items, at least items that I think are important, and that's our pools. So we're looking at two pools that are very old, and are going to need to be replaced. And we've done some preliminary design work on the center pool, and we've got a huge opportunity there, but it's going to cost a lot of money. Millions and millions of dollars, maybe north of ten million dollars to fix the center pool and make it what it should be. So again, it's a question of priority. Is it more important for us to fix the center pool? Or is it more important to us to spend several millions of dollars on the Town Hall? Arguments can be made for both. From where I sit, I think the pool is the more important priority. I think the high school is the more important priority. We've intentionally steered away from putting ARPA funds into the building on a big scale, because we have another couple of important priorities, one of which is the culvert at Washington Street, which we have set aside design plans for out of, out of ARPA. And we'll, you know, end up paying for that. That's another million-dollar project. So we have a lot of this. And you may not actually understand all of the things that are in the capital plan, but there are a tremendous number of items that are in there that over the next ten, twenty, thirty years, we're going to have to deal with. We could put the Town Hall in there. Certainly, we could do that. But that does mean that it's going to bump the priorities elsewhere. And I think that's a question that we, as a town, need to come to grips with. Thus the reason for putting this in front of the body that represents the town. And thus my feedback to you of how much I appreciate what you've told us tonight. We'll be taking a vote, probably in a few minutes at least, I hope, and we'll see what your direction is. And of course, we'll go down the path that, you know, you send us. But it does seem to me that restricting us to not be able to at least go out and try and sell this building is a mistake. And I would really request that you think about that. The Select Board is going to do the right thing for the town. I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure we could find a seller, or buyer, I guess. But I think it's something that's worth going and looking at and trying to get done. You've got a couple of other things in this article, too, that we're talking about, which is the East Walpole Library. Again, another, a fine old building that gets very limited use, very limited use. It needs a lot of investment to fix it. It's falling off its foundation. That's a bad thing. We're going to have to spend a lot of money to fix that East Walpole Library, and it's a building that's looking for a purpose. It doesn't have one, we don't use it today, it's locked up most of the time. That lot that we're talking about is a lot that is not generating any tax revenue for the town. And one of our objectives, as we looked at parcels across the town, was to figure out, are there opportunities for us to bring parcels that are not revenue generating to the town to move them back into a revenue generating state where taxes are being paid on them? And importantly, housing is being delivered for those lots. So again, to my thinking, these are all three very important things that we need to be doing as a town in terms of thinking about surplus assets that we have on the balance sheet. These are assets that are not producing anything to the town, that really aren't having any substantial use to them, and that could be, could be giving us much greater tax revenue. And if done properly, we can maintain the integrity of the historical aspect of the Town Hall. I'll leave you with one last thing, which is if you look at that historical preservation, a couple of pages that you have in the book, the one that stipulates, you know, this is a historical building, and these are the restrictions that are on it. If you look at the back page, you'll see my signature on that page, because I was on the Select Board when we did that. That's how important it was to me to maintain that building. So I don't come at this lightly. I think this is a very important thing that we need to do. I think it's very important that we maintain the historical integrity of that building, if we can, if it's at all possible to do. But we've got to deal with reality, too. And that's really what we're asking you to do tonight. So again, thanks for the feedback. My request is that you give us the option to go and try and sell this building and see what we can do to maintain the historical integrity of that building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you. A couple of follow-ups, through you, Mr. Moderator, to perhaps Town Council. Regarding the deed restrictions that are in place, I understand it's, that if the town is to sell it, whoever buys it has to follow those same deed restrictions. Is that correct?
Mr. Rich?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Obviously, the town would have, the town is reviewing, we, we've done the title review, and the town would be obligated to comply with any, any restrictions that remain in place, to the extent that they remain in place. So if, if there's a possibility, obviously, relaxing any of those restrictions, or finding ways to reuse the property within those restrictions. But I know that the, the, there's a, a great interest in preserving, both on the state side and on the town side, the, the facade of the building. So I think that that's, that's the intent, is to preserve that.
In a situation where we've gone ahead and sold the property to a buyer, and that buyer then violates in some manner the deed restrictions, is there any recourse on the town?
There would be, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
There'd be an enforceable deed restriction, so that the town obviously would monitor, you know, obviously, as we discussed earlier, the sale of the property would be through an RFP process. And so the proposal would have to specify the reuse of the property. And, and the one article that's written gives the, the Select Board authority to, to determine what, what the ultimate best use is, be it lease or disposition. But in that disposition, whether it's by lease or sale, the, the Select Board would, would be determining not just the best price that it gets, but the, the best reuse of the property, which would include the interest in, in preservation to the maximum extent possible. So certainly, the, the board would, would undertake that. Then you'd have a recordable instrument that would be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Then you'd have a recordable instrument that would be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and that would be enforceable against any developer. And certainly, I think everybody in this room and everybody at this table would see exactly what's happening on that building and determine if, if there was a violation, we'd be in court pretty fast.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. DiNizio.
Carrie DiNizio, Precinct Four. Move the question.
We have a motion to move the question. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? I declare a two-thirds vote. Question has been moved. So we will start with eighteen A, which is the Old Town Hall. Again, each of the articles requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your green, red card. Folks, I'm not even going to wait. We're going to standing count, okay? That is not, I'm going to say it's not two-thirds. Do you agree? All right, you know what? I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to do this one more time, okay? All those in favor of the Old Town Hall, please raise your green cards and say aye. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your red cards and say no. Okay, the motion fails. The, it is not a favorable vote. Article B, or eighteen B, this is for the sale of the East Wallpole Library, or I shouldn't say sale, sale, lease, or convey, otherwise convey. Again, two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards and say aye. All those opposed, please raise your red card and say no. I'm just doing some, excuse me one second, folks. Okay, the noes, please raise your red card again. The motion passes. I declare a two-thirds vote, favorable on the East Wallpole Library. Article eighteen C, which is for the land at Kingsbury and Plain Street. All those in favor, please raise your green cards and say aye. All those opposed, please raise your red card and say no. Hold them on. The article passes. I declare a two-thirds vote. On which one? So I need someone to make a motion, and I need seven people to support it. So someone make the motion, please. Hold on, standing count. That's twenty-one? Excuse me? You want a standing count on all three articles? Okay. All those who would like a standing count, please, please stay standing, sir. Okay, we will do a standing count. We will start with eighteen A. Yes. I, I, I'll take care of it. Okay, um, excuse me, for one second here. Tellers, tellers, please stay by a seat because I got to do, well, you actually, no, you can just use your cards. I need the six tellers only standing, please. Six tellers only standing, please. Mr. Carroll, would you please be seated? Thank you. Okay, for eighteen A, tellers in favor, please raise your green card. Tellers in favor, please raise your green card. Okay. Tellers opposed, raise your red cards. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your green cards and remain stand, or just, and remain standing. Standing, yes, I'm sorry, eighteen A, Town Hall, standing. Raise your green cards. Tellers, when you're done counting, you got to converse with each other and come up with a, a number, an agreed number. Looks like the right side can rest your arms now. Everybody else has to keep them up, though. And the left, right? Okay, all right. Robert, the right side vote? Oh, 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 sorry, 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 sorry. Do I take the noes? Yeah, go ahead, announce your, yeah, sorry.
All right, so the right-sided voted thirty-two and four.
Thirty-two, four. Okay, center?
Center had thirty-nine favorable votes.
Okay, and left? Mr. O'Connell? Five, okay. Okay, are you ready? Okay. Robert, what do you got on the, what do you got on the right?
We got nine against.
Excuse me?
Nine.
Nine?
Yep.
Nine, okay. Center, Ms. McCarthy?
Thirty noes.
Thirty. And on the left?
Nine.
Nine. So folks, the, as, as I called it, sorry, I got to, got to pat myself in the back. It was, it was, it was a no. Seventy-eight, four, fifty-two against, it's a hundred and thirty total. We needed eighty-seven favorable. So it was, the motion fails. A motion does not pass. Excuse me. On eighteen A. You ready for eighteen B now? Okay. Tellers, all those in favor for eighteen B, which is the East Wallpole Library, please raise your green cards. No, just the tellers. Just the tellers. Tellers, raise your green card. I see two. Okay, tellers opposed? Four. Okay, all right. Center, you ready now? Ready? Okay. All right, you can all remain seated, you can all be seated now? Okay. Hey, guys, I'm going to ask right now, because you know the numbers. I didn't see anybody leave. Did you see anybody leave? Did anybody leave? So, Bill?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, okay. On the right, center?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Left? Folks, that's ninety-eight favorable. I'm going to declare a two-thirds vote. Okay? Okay. I declare a two-thirds vote. Okay, now we're going to go to eighteen C. Same drill. The tellers, please raise your green card and say aye. Three. Okay. Tellers opposed, please raise your green card, or red card and say no. No, three, three to three. Okay. Right, please, all those in favor of selling the land at Plain Street and, brain cramp, why am I forgetting this? Kingsbury, Kingsbury and Plain. Okay, we have the vote again here. Mr. Buckley?
Thirty-seven in favor.
Thirty-seven. Center, Ms. McCarthy?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. And on the left, Mr. O'Connell? Five. Folks, that is eighty-nine votes, so even if people left, that still makes a two-thirds, I declare a two-thirds vote out of a hundred and thirty members. A hundred and thirty members, eighty-eight is a quorum, I mean, is a two-thirds vote. We have eighty-nine favorable. All right, everybody stand up for the noes then. Stand up. Come on, up. We ready? Okay, everybody can remain seated now. Okay, Mr. Buckley, on the right?
We have four noes.
Four?
Four.
Thank you. In the center, Ms. McCarthy?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And on the left? Nine, thank you, Ms. Waller. Folks, the quorum did reduce by a couple of numbers, but we still won by a resounding eighty-nine to thirty-nine. So I declare two-thirds vote, based on the standing count. The motion passes. I'm moving on. They'll be in the clerk's book tomorrow morning. Go to the microphone, please. Mr. Clark, thank you. Mr. Clark has a question on the numbers. For which one, Mr. Clark? Was it eighteen C? Mr. Clark, yeah, I apologize. I was a little, the reason I'm doing this is I want the body to hear our private discussion, okay? So is this, what article is this on?
I just wanted to verify, the three numbers that you mentioned out loud for C didn't add up, and I'm wondering if that's because it didn't include tellers?
The tellers were three to three.
Okay, so the three numbers you mentioned were thirty-seven, forty-four, and five? Oh. No, wait, thirty-seven, right.
Eighty-nine.
The three numbers...
Three, thirty-seven, forty-four, five, eighty-nine.
Right, I'm asking, I didn't hear the three, that's all I'm asking.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, the tellers was three to three, I said it in the beginning, I apologize.
That's all I wanted to hear.
No problem, thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions? So, to recap, eighteen A failed. Eighteen B and C passed, okay? All on standing counts. Article nineteen. This is an authorization for the town clerk's office to address Scrivener errors. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the general bylaws to add a new provision authorizing the town clerk to make non-substantive clerical changes to the bylaws enacted at town meeting, as shown, as printed in the warrant, and to authorize the town clerk to assign such numbering as is appropriate to bring said bylaw in conformance with the existing codification. Mr. Shea, the finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, select board?
Select board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Questions or comments, Ms. Khatib?
Sarah Khatib, precinct eight. Just a question, it wasn't in the article, but in the letter explaining it. The town clerk had said that she would consult the select board and then the zoning board. Just wondering if that refers to the ZBA or the planning board?
Mr. Rich?
Ms. Moderator, this is, this article refers to general bylaws, so it would not go to planning board for a public hearing?
Thank you. It does say the general bylaws.
Okay, in the letter, it said, should have been prepared, that it would be checked with the zoning board? No?
Select board or zoning board, that is, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, but it's only the general bylaws, so it doesn't apply to the zoning board, correct?
Four?
It says four, not any.
Right, so is it referring to the ZBA or the planning board?
Ms. Moderator, again, zoning bylaws would have to be reviewed and subject to a public hearing by the planning board under chapter forty-eight, section five. However, in this case, because these were general bylaws, there's no obligation to send them to any of the land use boards. And that, the letter did say, select board or zoning board, but zoning board approval and review is not required.
Okay, so if a Scrivener's error appeared in a zoning article, it would have to go through the full...
Yes, this is strictly only the general bylaws, so if it was a change in a zoning bylaw, then it would involve the planning board under chapter forty-eight, section five.
Okay, okay, that's it then, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Khatib. Mr. O'Connell?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Bill O'Connell, precinct four. I'm just wondering what the impetus is for the warrant or the article? There's nothing prospective, right? Town council, it references a town council recommending it? So through you, Mr. Moderator, town council, is this something that you're recommending for other towns? And if there's nothing that needs to be changed, it seems like it's just gonna be basically an open process where things can be changed after town meeting. I understand it's just for Scrivener's errors, but how do you differentiate what's a Scrivener's error versus something that's non-substantive?
Mr. Rich?
Non-substantive, I should say. Ms. Moderator, through you, these modifications would be, as it indicates, numbering and other clerical changes, clerical errors, non-substantive, as in they don't change the impact of the bylaws. So for better or for worse, any change to a bylaw has to come before this body. But these are not changes that would affect the substance or the actual action of a bylaw. So again, numbering, grammatical errors, pure Scrivener's errors.
And in theory, those, obviously, they should be caught before town meeting, town council, right?
They build, unfortunately, these things build up over time. You know, sometimes it's just a reflection of when bylaws are added and sometimes the numbering doesn't add up in the way that it was, it should have. There are things that don't get caught over time, so this is an opportunity. And it is something that towns regularly do, to essentially clean up these minor errors. When they get to a certain point, somebody has noticed them and says it's time to do a cleanup. It's a housekeeping issue.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Council. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Any other questions or comments with regards to article nineteen? Seeing none, this motion, is it, no, excuse me, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. Opposed, raise your red card and say no. I declare a favorable majority vote. Article twenty, authorization to increase the senior tax exemptions. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to accept the provisions of the general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause seventeen E, which authorizes an annual increase in the asset whole estate limit for exemptions granted to senior citizens, surviving spouses, and surviving minors under general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clauses seventeen, seventeen C, seventeen C and a half, and seventeen D, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the previous year, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, 2023. This is a petition of the Board of Assessors. Mr. Shea, the finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, select board?
Select board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any questions or comments with regards to article twenty? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a simple majority vote. Article twenty-one, authorization to increase income and asset exemptions. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to accept the provisions of general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause forty-one D, which authorizes an annual increase in the income gross receipts and asset wholesale limits for exemptions granted to senior citizens under general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clauses forty-one, forty-one B, and forty-one C, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the previous year, as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July first, 2021. This is a petition of the Board of Assessors, twenty twenty-three, excuse me, but it's article twenty-one. This is a petition of the Board of Assessors. Mr. Shea, the finance committee?
Finance committee voted favorable action thirteen zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. And Mr. O'Neill, the select board?
Select board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Questions or comments on article twenty-one? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a majority vote. Article twenty-two, an amendment to the in-law bylaw suite. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to refer this matter back to committee. This is a petition of the select board. Mr. Shea, the finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted to refer back to committee by a vote of ten, one, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, the select board?
Select board voted refer back, five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Mr. O'Leary, the planning board vote?
As an explanation before, the planning board voted for this article before some of the changes had been made, so we were voting on a original article twenty-two, and we voted two yes, three no.
Two-three?
Yeah.
So unfavorable?
Unfavorable, yeah.
Okay.
We did not see the changed.
Okay. Any questions or comments with regards to article twenty-two? There being none, this requires a majority, excuse me, this requires a majority vote because there's no action?
Refer back.
Refer back, excuse me, sorry, thank you for the correction there. This requires a majority vote because it's refer back, there's no substantive motion. So all those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and raise your red card. It is a majority vote to refer back to committee. Article twenty-five, this is an amendment to the zoning bylaws dimensional regulation in highway, in the Highway Business District. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, table six B dot one, as printed in the warrant. This is a petition of the planning board. Mr. Shea, the finance committee vote?
Finance committee voted favorable action ten, three, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, select board?
Select board voted favorable action five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Mr. O'Leary, planning board?
Planning board voted three, one, one, favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions or comments?
Katie Turco Beatty, precinct three, also a member of the planning board. So I was the one member who voted no on this, and I'd like to explain why. I feel the highway is a perfect place for commercial development, and I have no issue with the setbacks whatsoever. My issue's with the building height. The day of the public hearing, I had an appointment in Boston, and I intentionally came home via the VFW Parkway and Route One, all the way down to Big Y, so that I could look at the buildings along the way. If you drive through Dedham, Westwood, and Norwood, they do not have five-story buildings set on the highway. The only one building I saw was the hotel next to the chateau, and that one is set back a little more than ours would be, and it's lower, it's set down in the road. In my opinion, if a town like Dedham does not have this, I don't feel Walpole needs it. I feel that the four stories is adequate. There was a statement made that it does not mean they will build it if it's allowed, but I feel if it's in there, we're inviting it and showing that we're agreeable to it. So again, I have no problem with the setbacks, but I'm opposed to the height.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Mr. Fasenella? You're just getting ahead, right? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments on article twenty-five? There being none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. Guys, we're going to a standing count. Tellers, please, in favor, please raise your green cards. One, two, three, thank you. Tellers opposed, raise your red cards, please. Okay, all those in favor, please rise and raise your green cards for the standing count. All right, are we, all tellers ready? Okay. So, Mr. Buckley, the right?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Ms. McCarthy, the center?
Fifty.
Fifty, thank you. And Mr. O'Connell on the left?
Five.
I'm gonna ask folks, okay, 91 favorable. Do you guys want to see the no's? I can tell you it's two-thirds because we've had some members leave, not a lot, but a handful of left, and we're already exceeding the two-thirds majority on the 130 people. We good?
Good.
Anybody opposed? Okay, I declare two-thirds unanimous. I mean, two-thirds vote. Article 26, This is the amendment to the zoning bylaws, Relief for Garaging. It is regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Schedule of Use Regulations, Table 5-B-1 dot 3-M and Table 5-B dot 1 dot 3 dot N, as printed in the warrant. This is a petition of the Planning Board. Mr. Shea, the Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 13-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neal, Select Board?
Select Board voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. And Mr. O'Leary, the Planning Board?
Planning Board voted 4-1-0, favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions or comments with regards to Article 26, Mr. O'Leary?
John O'Leary, Planning Board? I was the lone dissenting vote on this article from the Planning Board. There was a couple, On the changes made in the article, it may not be clear, but there's more of a change than might be expected. The original articles for section use tables M and N allowed for not more than three motor vehicles and not more than one commercial vehicle. So that would have been a total of three vehicles, one of which could have been a commercial vehicle. It was the same wording in N also, three automobiles and or of more than one commercial vehicle. The new wording allowed the change to four automobiles and one commercial vehicle. So we're going from three allowed to five allowed, one of which can be a commercial vehicle, which is a significant change in something that's in your neighbor's yard. So I think the people who are voting for this should be aware that it's not just a bump up of one extra car in the yard. It could be two extra cars, one of which is a step van. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Fasenello?
Patrick Fasenello, Precinct 3. I'd like some clarification from you, Mr. Moderator, if you will. Right now, we can have three vehicles in our, on our property. That's correct, I assume. But it says here, one should be a commercial vehicle. If you read this, okay, does that mean if I would have to have two regular cars and then register one as a commercial vehicle in order to be in compliance with this?
Mr. O'Leary, Planning Board, can you speak to the question?
I believe Mr. Crowley from Building Inspections would be the one who's most likely to have the most up-to-date information if he's here.
Mr. Crowley, could you come down and help us out here?
My interpretation would be the commercial vehicle can be one of them. It doesn't have to be necessarily, well, I assume if it's a commercial vehicle, it has to be recorded as such, but you don't have to register a car as a commercial vehicle in order to qualify for that.
That's a, that's what he says, but.
Do you want to let Mr. Crowley answer the question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
He's right behind you. No, that's okay. He's right behind you.
Oh. Jim Crowley, Building Commissioner. The way the zoning's gone from is, right now, you're allowed three cars total. One of those cars can be a commercial vehicle up to a two-ton capacity. The new zoning will allow three cars as a residential plus one car that's a commercial or a truck that's commercial up to a two-ton capacity. So you're allowed, so before it was three cars, now you're up to four cars plus a one-ton, or sorry, commercial vehicle that's allowed up to two-ton capacity. It does not be registered if you have three registered cars and there are three residential cars, you're fine. If it's registered as a commercial, you're allowed one commercial again up to two-ton capacity.
So three plus one.
Mr. Fasenello, okay?
Yes, that says, he's the Building Commissioner, so I guess we take his word for it. But just thinking, you could, under this article, you could have two recreational vans and an oil truck. Is that right?
Well, yeah, okay, so I'm reading.
It's the registration, I think. Did you repeat your question for the gentleman's behind you? Because I'm gonna, it's who I'm gonna go to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know you couldn't hear them.
Basically, the way it's written, you could have two recreational vans plus an oil truck in your garage or in your driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, you could have two recreation vehicles and an oil truck as long as it does not exceed a two-ton capacity.
Two and a quarter ton. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Fasenello. Mr. O'Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to Mr. O'Leary's point, I just would see clarification with M and N. Is that a, is that a scriven as error? Is the and, because just to keep M and N consistent, should there be an and in M in subsection N? Because we don't have it in subsection four, so just a point of clarification, is that a scriven as error? And if so, you know, is it, is it something we should consider sending back or referring back for clarification? Because, again, to Mr. O'Leary's point, subsection M allows a total of five vehicles. And I'm not sure Building Inspector Crowley, if that was the intent, was it five or was it four? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell.
So the intent is for four residential with one, with one commercial. The difference between M and N is M is residential, so if you look across the table, it's allowed in residential. If you want to exceed that, you're allowed to that under N in commercial, but it's a special permit in residential under N to exceed that number.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Any other questions or comments with regards to Article 26? All those in favor, this requires a two-thirds vote, please raise your green cards and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your red card and say no.
No.
I declare two-thirds vote. All right, so Articles 27 and 28, we're going to discuss together, but we will vote on separately. They're basically the same article, except one's two-family, one's three-family, so if you have some specific, if you're making comments, you might want to speak to one or the other. If you're talking generally, talk generally. So I'm going to read both motions. Article 27 is an amendment to the zoning bylaws, two-family in general residence is regularly moved and seconded. The town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Schedule of Use Regulations, Table 5-B dot 1 dot 3 dot B, as printed in the warrant. And the Article 28 is for a three-family in general residence, regularly moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Schedule of Use Regulations, 5-B dot 1 dot 3 dot C, as printed in the warrant. These are both petitions of the Planning Board. Mr. Shea, the vote on Article 27, the two-family residents?
Finance Committee voted favorable action by a vote of 7-6-0.
Seven, six, zero. Thank you. Mr. O'Neal, the Select Board vote on Article 27, two-family residents?
Select Board voted favorable action 3-2-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. And Mr. O'Leary, the Planning Board vote on Article 27?
The Planning Board voted 4-1-0 on Article 27. Favor?
Favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. On Article 28, the Finance Committee vote. Mr. Shea?
Finance Committee voted favorable action by a vote of 7-6-0.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. And Mr. O'Neal, Select Board?
Favorable action 3-2-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. And Mr. O'Leary, on the Article 28, three-family in general residence?
The Planning Board voted favorable action 4-1-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions or comments with regards to Articles 27 or 28? Mr. Damish?
Damish, Precinct 7, I'm curious as to how this originated with the Planning Board. I'd like to hear what, how this even got started, these two articles.
Sure. Mr. O'Leary?
Wasn't us. We did not propose this article.
This says a petition of the Planning Board, Mr. O'Leary. So how did it come to the Planning Board?
Because the Planning Board must vote on it. It was not originated in the Planning Board.
Yep, Mr. DeShane?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. So the thought process on Articles 27 and 28 was taking a look at those two housing types, in particular, you know, the town has seen a lot of growth with housing, primarily with single-family residential and recently with apartment dwellings and mixed use. Two and three-family is only allowed in one district, one residential zoning district, which is the GR, General Residence. General Residence is also the smallest residential zoning district, so the area is limited for this type of use. Beyond that, both the two and three-family are further regulated because there's an additional need for square footage for the lot, whereas in the GR, the minimum lot area is 15,000 square feet. For a two-family, you need 20,000. For a three-family, you need 30,000. So the thought process behind it is both uses are only allowed in a limited amount of space, and both uses are also further regulated by the need for additional lot area. So planning ahead, thinking of turnover, future growth, as well as different housing types and needs for future residents, proposing going from a special permit to buy right was simply to help facilitate the process. Both, you know, the use is also already currently allowed, so it's nothing that's out of character within the GR. It's just simply making the process run a little smoother for our future property owner.
Thank you, Mr. DeShane. Ms. Lawson?
Lawson, Precinct 2, I just have a question about where the general residence zoning district is. I understand it is east Walpole. Is it, am I right?
Yeah, so without a visual, a primary portion is within east Walpole, also somewhat around the downtown location. There's also a portion that's above 1A, I guess if you're closer towards the Norwood side. So if anyone, you know, is able to look at the zoning map online, it's like a light green color. It's around, actually, only about 6.6 of the town's total land area, but it's within that area, I mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Mr. Flowers?
Andrew Flowers, Precinct 4. I'm the Chair of the Walpole Housing Partnership and a member of the Walpole Master Plan Steering Committee. To my fellow RTMs, Walpole needs more housing choices for firefighters, for teachers, for plumbers, nurses. In fact, our economic development depends on a diverse workforce living within a commutable distance of this very job-rich metro area, the greater Boston area that we live in. There are considerable demographic and economic changes happening underfoot that affect Walpole's housing. You have, for example, the aging baby boomer population and millennials like myself, who are having fewer kids and desiring more walkable, slightly dense communities. Because of the success of the greater Boston area, our land here in Walpole and in surrounding communities is extremely expensive. Like many, or most of you, I would imagine, I live in a single-family home, and the land assessment of that home exceeds the assessment on the structures. I don't know if anyone else has that, where your land is more valuable than the structure of your home. That speaks to the desirability of Walpole and the greater Boston area. That's a good thing. However, to go back to my point about housing choices, this is a constraining factor for growth in our community that is in keeping with our character. Because growth and change, while a challenge, are bound to happen because of the desirability of the labor market of the greater Boston area. So how do we manage that growth and change that is in keeping with the character of Walpole? And I think this proposal is a great example of a change to our zoning bylaws that would further the growth and change needed in our housing stock to increase choices, but also keep the character of Walpole intact. So I strongly support both Articles 27 and 28, and urge my fellow RTMs to vote yes on both. As a member of the Walpole Master Plan Steering Committee, I just want to call out, this is an as-yet unpassed draft version of the master plan. So I'm not endorsing this. I speak just as relaying information. There's quote in the master plan, according to our consultants, this sentence. "Walpole's zoning bylaws has few provisions for the creation of affordable housing or any types of housing beyond single-family housing." And one of the key actions our consultants recommends in response to this is ease restrictions on residential development. But again, keeping in character with the development of Walpole. Because no one here is proposing, you know, by right, the ability to build 20-unit condos, right? We're just, this is duplexes and triplexes. So specifically in the report, I quote from this draft master plan, it says, quote, "Consider allowing two-family dwellings by right in the general residence district," end quote. And so what's at issue here is not whether or not the general residence district, the GR district, allows for duplexes and triplexes. It's already in the zoning bylaws. This is whether you can do it by right, right? And so why do it by right versus having special permit or an honoris hearing process where there's, yes, there's public input, but hiring of engineers, hiring of external help, and elongating the carrying cost of a project? The reason to do that is because it makes the project more expensive. So that's the first bullet point here, with increased choices for all the community members, the workforce that we need to attract, the firefighters, the teachers, and the residents, the young kids who grew up in Walpole. The second point I want to make in support of this article is, and this is key, it's keeping in character with Walpole's neighborhood. There is in Walpole a missing middle of housing units. So housing units, think of two to six units, right, that are acceptable for Walpole in terms of our character. The missing middle happens because there's either single-family homes or large multifamily 40B developments. And by voting against this article, what you would be doing is, by eliminating the missing middle, the duplexes, the triplexes, you would just be forced, prospective Walpole residents or homeowners to look at alternatives, such as large, dense, multifamily housing. So if you're against large, dense, multifamily housing or 40Bs, I highly encourage you to think thoughtfully that expanding the housing choices just marginally from single-family homes to duplexes and triplexes, and not everywhere, just in the GR, in the kind of the area that I live in, and I support this, I think it just makes a lot of sense. So in conclusion, I just want to encourage all my RTMs to vote for both Articles 27 and 28. There is a tension here between our small-town ambiance, the character, versus growth and change, right? We want to have the character of our neighborhoods, but we also need more housing choices. This is a very sensible compromise. I encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee?
Good evening, John Lee, Precinct six, also is a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's just be clear what this is about. This is not about saying that you can't have two-family and three-families in the general residence, you're already allowed to have that. What this article is doing is changing it from going from a special permit to allowed by right. And what is the advantage of a special permit? The advantage of a special permit is that anybody in the general residence zoning district, which by the way stretches from the Brown Drive neighborhood over to Swan Pond and all the way down Main Street, down beyond the Aggie on the other side, and also a good chunk of East Walpole. So think about those houses in those neighborhoods, that's what we're talking about. So, what does it mean? If somebody wants to make a three-family house or a two-family house right now, they can do it, they come and they have a public hearing. In a public hearing, everybody gets a chance to say what's going to happen, the neighbors can say, hey, I've got concerns about parking, I've got concerns about a buffer. If this passes, there will be no public hearing, and the only notice a neighbor will get is when the construction starts. They won't be noticed that there's a building permit issued, it'll just happen. So, just keep that in mind, this is not about saying that you can't have two-family or three-families in the general residence, you can do it right now, you just have to have a public hearing process for it. And that protects the neighbors, I don't live in the GR, but if I did, I'd want to make sure that I would have the protection of a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, Chandler Sullivan, Precinct two, I think Mr. Lee just answered my question, was the whole buy-right thing, would this make it so that neighbors are not notified, which I believe is the case, which as, you know, I guess, I think I can, right now, I live in GR, I think I do, I don't even know for a hundred percent, I'm a hundred percent opposed to not be notified of what goes on with my neighbors and just have that sprung that a two-family or a three-family is going to be developed. Currently, right now, there's a, a house on Union Street in East Walpole that was a single-family that just got moved, switched to a duplex. I'm assuming those neighbors, under the way it is right now, would have had been notified, but going forward, nobody would have to be notified of what you did with your own residents if it made it into a duplex or a triplex. And, does it mean that you don't have to go in front of the zoning board anymore for the special permit? The zoning board would be cut out essentially if these two articles were passed, is that true or false?
That is correct. Right? Mr. Rich, thank you.
Okay. And if that's the case, I want more checks and balances in place for what happens in town for housing.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Sir?
Sean McCauley, Precinct two. Along the same train of thought, we've heard on a number of different times over the years about affordable housing in town and such, and once again, this is specific to the general residence. So through you, Mr. Moderator, and I don't know who to ask, why is resident, residential A, residential B, rural areas of town exempt when we're going through and making amendments? And once again, it's, we'll just put it all in the general residence and these guys can deal with this while we're taking away our ability to have a hearing, and that's what we're voting on. So I don't, I don't know who to ask that question too, but...
Mr. Shane?
Mostly because the GR is the only residential district that allows for that use. So, the change initially, I think it was nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-three, don't quote me on that, but this used to be a use that was allowed by right within the GR. It changed during the eighties for whatever, whatever reasoning, but it's, by my knowledge, it's been there for decades.
May I respond without being on the line? Clearly, somebody forty years ago said, "That's a bad idea, we better change it." And they did. And then everyone left, and no one remembers why, and now we're going to change it back. It sounds kind of, counterintuitive.
Mr. Deshane, is that a question or is that a statement?
I, it was a statement, it was, what was the motivation from forty years ago, if anyone remembers, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah. No, we're not going back on that.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Yep.
Excuse me, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. McCauley, thank you. Mr. Chikarowski?
Philip Chavravsky, Precinct seven, also I am the Chair of the Master Plan Committee and on the Planning Board, and one of the ones who voted in favor of this article. So I just want to affirm what, what Mr. Flowers was saying, we do have a need for housing in our community. The, the general residence district is the place right now where we do allow multifamily housing. The reason why, really, the only change on this is, is taking away the special permit, there may be more, you know, looking at more, how to get more housing later on, but right now, that's the only thing this, this bylaws doing. And as Mr. Deshane said, first of all, there's very, there, there are dimensional requirements for doing a two-family, three-family house, so there are protection already built into our bylaws. In fact, there's, there's only so many, a, a small percentage of the total lots that are in general residence that would even be able to be built as two- or three-family house. The reason though, for removing the special permit is because again, it's another obstacle for someone coming along and building a house. And, you know, we don't require special permits for a lot of changes in our, our bylaws. If you want to do an addition, we don't require that. So, it's really just doing a very sensible thing, it promotes more affordable housing or more housing, and we will, by having more housing, we hopefully will have more affordable housing. And also, as Mr. Flowers mentioned, we do have this, this gap of two-family, three-family small housing units. So the fact is that Walpole is growing, and we need to grow it wisely, we need to keep the, the, the look and feel of the town, and we can do that, but we can also grow in a very, very planned way that also gives us more housing. So I really encourage people to vote yes for it, and I, I don't see a problem without having, taking away the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chikarowski. Ms. Higgins?
Megan Ahigian, Precinct one, bona fide resident of the GR, I just confirmed on the map. And I rise in favor of both these articles, and for anyone who's opposed to it, I would ask you to think deeply about why you feel it's necessary to have a public hearing for a multifamily house versus a five-thousand-square-foot McMansion which can be slapped up with no oversight by the town whatsoever, and what's really driving that? Because I personally think that multifamily housing is a great kind of housing, and it's a kind of housing that we need more of in this area to attract, you know, it's a good place for baby boomers to go as they downsize, it's a great place for working families to go, it's just a type of housing that we don't have enough of. And so, you know, taxing that type of housing by forcing a developer to go through extra hoops, and, you know, ending up with more giant McMansions, just, it's not really the type of town that I think we should be striving for. And so, I encourage everyone to be thoughtful and consider voting yes for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Barrows?
Liz Barrows, Precinct one. I'm obviously a resident of Precinct one and general residence, and if our community feels that we need to create more family dwellings within, within our borders, if, if it's correct that about six percent, I'll refer to our planning person through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure if that's accurate, six percent is the GR, okay. If, if, if GR is six percent of our entire town, why should the burden be placed on just the six percent? Shouldn't we change all of our, our zoning regulations to make them all incrementally, incrementally increase so that it's not in this one dense area? That's one of my concerns, and then my other concern is, a lot of the lots are non-conforming to begin with, many different reasons for not being, for being non-conforming. I think that the residents who've lived in general residence their whole life have, should have the right to address concerns when their neighbor already has a non-conforming lot.
Thank you, Ms. Barrows. Mr. O'Leary?
John O'Leary, Planning Board. I was the lone dissenting vote on both of these articles, and it basically goes back to what Mr. Lee spoke about. We're not opposed to having two- and three-family houses at the moment, the limited to GR, but we just want them to go through the stage to allow the neighbors to be aware of what's going, what's being proposed, and give them the right to speak their mind, raise any issues they have. The previous speaker here said, "What's the difference between a three-family and a McMansion?" Actually, in a lot of cases, there probably isn't, it's, you have this huge structure next to you all of a sudden. Maybe we should restrict these giant houses on small lots, but we don't have any provisions for that yet. As the population of Walpole grows, maybe it will become necessary to expand multifamily housings into other zoning districts, be, be the first choice. But that hasn't come yet, and it isn't before us right now. So that's the point I wanted to make out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Kelly?
Joseph Kelly, Precinct three. I'm speaking in favor of multifamily housing. I think people would be a lot happier with this type of housing scattered about rather than these large complexes that are going to turn into projects in ten years. You go to towns like Norwood, Dedham, you were talking about height restrictions, these towns all have two-family houses. And I think if you look at police records and stuff, you're going to see a lot less crime and, and problems in these two- and threes than you're going to see in these massive multifamily housing. You find very little problems with these two families, and I think it's a great way for kids and people that can't afford single-family homes to get ahead. And I, I'm just shocked that somebody said forty years ago they did away with it, well, it worked for many, many years, and I think that's why we're going to be getting back to that type of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Lawson?
Lawson, Precinct two. I'm opposed to these two articles for the simple reason that as a representative in Precinct two, my constituents would be affected, whereas most of the town will not be affected. And the, the problem I have is not with multiple, two-family and three-family homes, I think they're fine. However, I think that the abutters should have the right to have a voice, and that there should be, as it is now, a special permit that ensures that the people who are neighbors will have their voices heard. Doesn't mean that these structures cannot be built, but it does mean that the abutters are protected, and I'm in favor of that. Moreover, I would encourage zoning to look at expanding the, the ability to have multiple family dwellings elsewhere in, in the town, I think that would share the burden. But in the meantime, let's let people have the right to have their voices heard if they're going to change property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Yes?
Sue Shockett, Precinct eight. I think this is a well-intentioned article, however, I think it takes away the rights of the residents in the surrounding area, so I'm opposed to it. I've been bitten a couple of times already by well-intentioned land use laws, and again, I think it takes away the rights of the citizens in the surrounding area to choose how they want their neighborhood to look. So I, I think it should, I have a feeling that forty years ago, people started seeing multi-unit dwellings popping up all over the place, and the town getting sort of a, more of a city feel, and that's probably why it was stopped in the first place. So I think keeping it as it is now, where people get a say in how their neighborhood looks, is the way to go. So again, I oppose these. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shockett. Ms. Denizio?
Carrie Denizio, Precinct four. There are, I think, still over a hundred of us in this room, I'm willing to wager that most of us are fortunate enough to have the space that we need for our families and our homes. I actually don't count myself in that number, we're busting at the seams and my kids are driving me crazy, but anyway. You know, there's a hundred and something of us here, there's twenty-five thousand people who live in this town, and we need to represent all of them, and there are probably many people in our town who don't have a voice here tonight, who would be very much in favor of more options for their family. There are apartment complexes in town with waitlists a mile long, there are people who can't afford the taxes on their very large property. I don't really understand why we would not be in favor of giving those people more options, and I'm a little bit discouraged by the talk of, well, why should we have to bear it just in our zone? Well, we have the ability to, as Patrick has pointed out, because it's already allowed in that zone. And I would like to think that in the GR, which I call home, we can be neighborly enough to invite more people into our community instead of treating it like it's a country club. And I think too, that, you know, we shouldn't be speculating about what happened forty years ago, however, I think if we went back in time, we would look at the mass exodus of families from Boston moving to the suburbs, and that may have played a role in people's panic about multifamily housing. And as Mr. Kelly pointed out, we're coming back around to the idea that multifamily housing doesn't need to be demonized. I really haven't heard a strong, specific argument for what exactly is so problematic about multifamily housing, if somebody has one, you know, obviously they're at liberty to share. But I haven't heard one yet. So I'm in support of these articles, people need more choices, everyone deserves a nice place to live, not just those of us who are already here.
Thank you, Ms. Denizio. Mr. Hausenjager?
Jim, I'll come to you after Hausenjager. Thank you. Just, there are good arguments on both sides, I just wanted to clarify, I think that the statement that there isn't enough oversight on this process as proposed by Patrick, people should remember, the, the Planning Board writes the zoning articles, and the building inspector and the inspection department enforces them, they have the expertise. The zoning board is really a board of judges for supposedly, the, the real name of the zoning board of appeals, they're supposed to deal with appeals. But to think that somehow the supervision or oversight is being eliminated is absolutely incorrect. The, the, the best security for reviewing any kind of development is the building department, they do, they are the full-time professionals with all the expertise in all the areas. So I don't think that should be a reason not to support this article. And those of you who, so many folks in town want more affordable housing, people who do that for a business, I'm retired, but any kind of hearing process, right away, the attorney's fees are ten, fifteen thousand dollars just to make an appearance and to prepare a presentation. And that's enough for a small person who's trying to do this, and then you get, this calendar can be nine months or whatever, and then there's other experts, and then there's debate and appeals, and the projects get defeated. So it's not just a board review. I, I don't know if there's some way to have a notice to abutters, I don't think anybody that's trying to do this would object, they want, they probably love the abutters and want to be their neighbors. But I don't think it should, you should vote against this because you think somebody's going to get away with some kind of oversight, because you have the maximum oversight, and it's already allowed in the district, on these lots, in this style. It's simply a way of making it a little more economical and an inducement in these hard economic times for people to get some affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hausenjager. Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, it looks like we're already, looks like we're already there, but just in case, move the question. I need a two-thirds vote to move the question, all those in favor, please say aye, raise your green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards. I declare a two-thirds vote, the question has been moved. All those, we're going to vote on Article twenty-seven first, this is the two-family general residence. All those in favor, this requires a two-thirds vote as well, all those in favor of Article twenty-seven, please raise your green cards and say aye. All those opposed, please raise your red card and say no. Standing count, folks, it's too important not to go to a standing count on this. Tellers first. Yeah, let me just double-check something on the tellers. Okay, none of them spoke, okay. Okay, none of them spoke. Tellers in favor, please raise your green cards. Tellers, you paying attention? Okay, tellers in favor, please raise your green card. Two. Okay, thank you. Tellers opposed, please raise your red card. Four. Okay, all those in favor, please rise and hold your green cards up.
I'm like, I don't, I don't need any candy.
And there you go.
This is from the dollar, the MMA thing?
Yeah.
He's on the, I got more here, too.
Yeah. Something, what do they say on them? KP or something?
KP, 10 years.
Yeah. Yeah, we figured we could have a bunch of them.
Where does one go to get special M&amp;M's made up? That's where you, you got good people working for you, like, go find it.
We have the young associates, they hand letters.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Right. Card. Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine. And on the left, Mr. O'Gon, two.
Okay, now we're going to go with the nose, please stand.
Yes, we had somebody new bought a bunch of the candy initially, and they bought Tootsie Pops and Tootsie Rolls. And we said, no way.
People's teeth were involved.
Not only that, but you imagine, as people sitting at the front table, Tootsie Pops.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no. Somebody didn't get them. K's were all in the office.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, nose on the right.
Nine.
Nine. Center.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. And on the left.
Nine.
Sorry, Mr. Warren, I called.
Where were you sitting, Mr. O'Leary?
I was sitting here at, I.
Are you in the center or, did you sit?
I was originally in the center.
You were sitting in the center? Okay, and you guys did not count Mr. O'Leary, I'm assuming?
No.
And you didn't count Mr. O'Leary, right?
I didn't count.
You did? Okay, as long as he's only counted once, that's good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Wouldn't want that raised later. The motion failed. Seventy-five to forty-four. We need it, we have 119 members, and we needed that quorum of seventy, I mean, a two-thirds required seventy-nine. So it failed by four votes. We will now vote on Article 28, which is the three-family general residence. All those in, I'll wait till folks sit. I'm going to say yes. I got a little trick up my sleeve after this one. To save us the standing count, I hope. Unless anybody disagrees, we'll see. All those in favor, please raise your green card and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your red card and say aye. No, that's an easy one. The motion does not pass. It fails, the two-thirds. No, I have that one requires a, for Article 28? But, by the way, folks, it still failed. It is a simple majority, and I'm going to ask Mr. Rich just to explain that briefly to you all. I did forget something.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. To the meeting, some of you may know recently, relatively recently, an amendment was made to the Housing, the Zoning Act. This is part of the Housing Choice Act. And what the Housing Choice Act did was it changed some of the quantum of votes for zoning amendments. I know we're all used to the simplicity that zoning amendments routinely require a two-thirds vote, but in cases where the zoning amendment creates additional community housing under the, essentially, there's an MBTA right of housing requirement. And in this case, the creation by right of three-family housing would have fit within the MBTA zone and within the Housing Choice Act, and so it would have only triggered a simple majority. I don't disagree with the moderator's, certainly don't disagree with the moderator's call on the vote, but I thought it would be important to explain that.
There was no count on the second article, the three-family. It was just a yea and an nay, and I will tell you, it was resoundly no. I will do it again if any of you want to see the visuals. I don't mind. No, it does not apply to 27, only to 28. Right. That was my bad. I actually have it in my notes, and I failed to read it, because I wrote, declare if unanimous. So anyways, Article 28 also fails then, as well. So we are on to Article 29. This is an amendment to the zoning laws, reduced, for reduced parking requirements in the central business district. This is a petition of the Planning Board. It is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, schedule of use regulations, Table 5-B dot 1 dot 3 dot G dot I, and section eight parking regulations, Table 8 dot 3 dot 1, parking code and requirements, as printed in the warrant. Mr. Shea, the Finance Committee vote.
Finance Committee voted favorable action 12-1-0.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, Select Board.
Favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Mr. O'Leary, Planning Board.
Planning Board voted two favorable, one no, two abstains for a favorable vote.
Two-one-two. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions or comments with regards to Article 29? Yes, Ms. Turco of eighty.
Sorry, I know it's late, I'll talk quick. Parking in the CBD can be a little bit of an issue. This one sounds good on paper, but in reality, it is just because a lease only, just because a lease only allows one space, does not mean that a tenant of a two- or three-bedroom truly has one car. In addition, Walpole Center does not provide all the resources needed for walking and not having a car. There's no supermarket, just to name one thing. When the municipal lot was paved, it became clear that many tenants of the new buildings parked there and did not have an alternative option. The municipal lot is not intended for this use. It is to be used for people visiting downtown, businesses, recreation, et cetera. By making this change, I feel we would just be creating more of a parking issue. We would be shifting the burden from the landlord responsibility to creating a burden for the tenant, the police department, and the DPW. Just picture a snowstorm. Where are the cars going to go if they have no parking spot allotted by their apartment building? I think we have to think about this before we just push it through and make it sound like it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turco of eighty. Mr. Chikarowski.
Philip Shavravsky, Precinct Seven. I was one of the members of the Planning Board that voted in favor of this. Note that the direction in our municipalities are to reduce the amount of paved, paved asphalt, also to reduce the number of cars. And note that some of the largest, large buildings that recently went up in the center of town, they were granted a smaller ratio of cars by the, by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, this kind of recognizes that. It makes a ratio that comes down, that is felt reasonable. And again, it's promoting fewer cars, more walking, and the ways being, it's up to the, it is up to the owner of the property, the condominium developer, to put that in deeds, and I believe that's working better now, so I know there's been a problem. But this is, looking forward, fewer cars, promoting walking, and also having, you know, a community where we have a lot of apartments in our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
So I promote, I ask members to vote yes for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chikarowski. Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just for, Mr. Duchesne, Planted Duchesne, by reducing the number of parking spaces, are you actually increasing the number of building units, potentially the square footage and buildable units, according to this table and this formula?
Mr. Duchesne.
Thank you. I guess that really depends on the development. So currently, in our central business district, the only housing use that's allowed is a mixed-use development. We have kind of a unique way of calculating, calculating density based upon the area designated for commercial use. You can provide residential three-and-a-half times the square footage of the space dedicated towards commercial use. So in theory, if you have less parking, you could have a bigger building, but it really depends on, it's kind of too difficult to say. It really depends on the development itself and what a developer would propose.
Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I just concur with Ms. Turco with respect to the parking, and I'm opposing the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Any other questions or comments with respect to Article 29? There being none, this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye and raise their green cards. All those opposed, please say no and raise your red cards.
No.
The motion fails. I declare the motion does not pass, two-thirds. Okay. Not used to saying that, sorry. Article 30, two to go, folks. Hang in there. This is an amendment to the zoning bylaws excavation. It is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to refer this matter back to committee. This is a petition of the Planning Board. Mr. Shea, the Finance Committee vote.
Finance Committee voted to refer back to committee, 13-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, Select Board.
Refer back, 5-0-0.
And Mr. O'Leary, Planning Board.
Planning Board, refer back, 5-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any questions or comments with respect to Article 30? There being none, this requires a simple majority vote, because it's no action. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your green cards.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your red card. I declare a majority vote. I declare a majority vote to refer back to committee. Thank you. They're coming from both sides now. Thank you, I appreciate that. This is Article 31, the middle school utility easement. It is regularly moved and seconded at the town vote to authorize the Select Board to grant an easement or easements in the town's property at 625 Washington Street, more or less depicted as lots 250 and 256 on Assessors Map 27, and Lot 145 on Assessors Map 26, for utility purposes, including but not limited to utilities for the transmission of intelligence and communications upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems to be in the best interest of the town, and to authorize the Select Board to execute all documents and take all actions necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. This is a petition of the Select Board. Mr. Shea, the Finance Committee vote.
Finance Committee voted favorable action 13-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. O'Neill, the Select Board.
Favorable action 5-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Questions or comments with respect to Article 31? There being none, all those in favor, please raise your green cards and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your red cards and say no. I declare a unanimous two-thirds vote. Pass.
Motion to dissolve, second.
Was that Mr. Buckley who basically said the motion to dissolve, and it was seconded by Mr. Buckley?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So long, folks.